You're listening to Earnestly Speaking, the only weekly podcast that covers friends, foes, and anything that goes. And now for your badass host, Ernest Owens.
And we're back with another episode of Earnestly Speaking with your host, Ernest Owens, myself. Well, April definitely came and is about to go, but what a bang. Oh, my goodness, this, this past weekend, um, this past week in general has been like, whoa, so much. And definitely I would say this weekend, just like, I was like, come on, April, what, what y'all got in store, right? And April just was like, hold my beer. We're not done yet, you know, we're, we're close to, to May and May is going to be lit. This is gonna be lit. It's, there's so much on the May calendar, the May agenda that I have had to, I mean, we're, we're, we're gonna be in multiple locations, okay? We're in Chicago, we're in Baltimore, we're, we're, we're going all over, of course Philly, but there, there's going to be a lot of moving and grooving. Graduation season is upon us, um, nonstop. Like next weekend, I have CCP commencement, which is my first commencement as a CCP professor. So I'm all in on it. You know, you know, when I was a professor at Chaney, I did about, I think, three commencements, I think, back to back. But this is my first CCP one, which should be interesting. It's gonna be at the Leo Chorus Center, which is where my younger brother's gonna have his graduation the following week after, uh, next week. So I'm like at the Leo Chorus Center like two times. Then of course Baltimore, um, following that. Then there is the primary, which I'm ready personally for that to be done with. Like let's get, let's get, let's get to it, okay? May 20th couldn't get any sooner. And there's just so many other events. I mean Cowboy Carter, Chicago, Lit Brothers, like PAB Jamie Professional Awards, the day after the Beyonce concert, I, I, we got a lot going on over here. And how do I make it work? Because, you know, I keep up with dates. I keep up with my schedule, I keep up with dates. It's a lot of people I hear who wanna be quote unquote booked and busy, but can't maintain a calendar, but that's another thing for, I'm, I'm just, you know, people as adults, just what I'll tell folks, keep up with your stuff, schedule your stuff, be organized, keep a calendar, save dates, like save dates, not, not someone telling you, oh, I have something on blah, blah, blah date, and then you go, oh, oh, I didn't, I forgot about that. It's like, well, actually pull out your phone, pull out your calendar and put the date on there so that you don't find yourself in a situation where you're overlapping or, you know, you know, not, or for, or putting, pushing it back until later, like save dates. I'm very big on that. I always put something on a calendar, always look at calendar. I'm always doing, especially with me, like I keep up with a lot of my things in advance. Like I have a really, like I have a thing where everything I feel like is in concert with each other. Like when I think about weeks and scheduling, like there's always a prime time where there's a lot of things happening and I'm always like, especially weekends, you, you just notice the flow. Like May, I'm always big on anytime someone tells me something's in May, everything needs to go onto the calendars to save that, even if I haven't fully confirmed something because I know whoa, 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 there's a lot going on, there's a lot of, of graduations, there's a lot of other celebrations going on, like holidays, I need to make sure these are, let me just make sure I run everything by, right? For me, my big times where I make sure I schedule things or keep up with things is in January, cuz I have a lot of friends' birthdays in January. February, because that is my relationship anniversary, my, my, our Valentine's, all of that is there, Mr. Johnson's birthday, got another couple Aquarius birthdays around that time, so I'm always like, hold on, let me get them dates right, Grammys as well, all that's in February. March tends to be chill, it's just my younger brother's birthday, my baby brother's birthday in April, pretty chill. I, I, you know, I typically don't get too flustered. May, graduation season, commencement, all those things are going on. June is Pride Month, there's, there's, you know, Juneteenth festivities potentially, so I, I keep an eye open. Fourth of July is Fourth of Jamarcus, like that doesn't get touched. August is pretty chill, I mean, the first week of August, I always block off from Martha's Vineyard at this point. September, Labor Day. October, that's when things begin to get rampy because October is anniversary, wedding anniversary, my birthday, um, just fall festivities overall, you got all kind of fall openings, festivities, you got that last month before the election, so that gets a little, you know, big. But December is also one that I don't play with either sometimes because of holiday parties, end of the year things, wrap ups, travel. I'm always paying close mind in December, but I just know my calendar. And so mentally, I'm always like, this is a busy, this is gonna be a busy month and I'm already like, let me make sure I don't make promises that I can't keep, let me make sure that certain dates and times, like it starts, stuff like that starts mattering. And so I have a, I'm rigorous on ca- on calendar. So how organized I am with calendar is that I have two types of planners. I have the Google Calendar, which is like my reminder, which is, you know, is, it, it does what it do, right? But I also have my own, what I call manual calendar, where literally I write out every date, like a note, like it's like a personal notes. And I put every date down and I manually write what, or type per se, I type what, what, what time and what date. I have found, this is just my own personal, you know, my own personal thing, I know some people have their own way of organizing, so if it don't work for you, it don't work for you, if it don't apply, let it fly. But for some people, for me, manually writing or typing something on a date with a time is my way of owning and committing to what I put down. Now, if something changes, something gets canceled, I immediately go into that note and I take it out. And I've been doing this for, ooh, maybe eight years and it's been with Google Docs. And so Google Docs have an app, and so I just have a Google Doc and I literally put March dates and I put every single, I name every single date, like, like line by line, like it's like a row of like 30, 31 dates. And I literally type in, like manually type in anything I have scheduled, um, that I have personally put, and that is my personal guy. So anytime someone tells me, hey, save this date, I pull up my Google Docs immediately and I type in, you know, what, what the time is and also pull up to see if there's something conflicting. So I can look and pull up the app real quick, pull up the Google Docs and say, hold on, and it's like April dates, May dates, whatever, I'm like, hold on, what's that, what time you said? Oh, I can't do that, I already got this and that. I can tell you right immediately, like I pull up the schedule like that. Some people say, well, why not just do that with calendar? I do both. The calendar serves as a way to send me a reminder on my phone, cuz I have Android and see, I'm team Android, and I think the reason why I like having Android, because Android has a good relationship with Google, all of it's connected, they're, you know, about the same business. They have a, you know, they have a good alert system that is in all of your planning. So like Google Docs harmonizes with the calendar, everything's on one system, it's just easy for me to organize. And that, that's just my style, like look, other people have their techniques that work. If you are punctual and you know how to be on time and know how to honor stuff, by all means, that. But if you struggle with organizing dates and keeping up with things and things, this is just a hack that I've been doing for a long time. And I feel like when I manually put things in and write it in that note, I, like I said, it holds me accountable, but it's also, it just stays in my mind. Like I can know what I have coming up this week because I've done it. And I always check, I do a daily check and a weekly check. Like I always look on what's coming up in a week, um, so I can plan accordingly. And I always try to even be proactive and book things ahead. So for example, I have a monthly massage that I partake in, I get a haircut every two weeks, um, sometimes I might need to get a shape up in between if I'm making some TV appearances, but I, I have a routine. And, you know, I have things that I haven't gotten too crazy now, some people do the color, I might do a little bit of color coordination, but I'm not, I'm not one of those like freaks about it, but there's things where it's like, okay, this is something that is, that can be moved, this is something that can be moved. And so red, the red for me is this is a deadline, this is a non-negotiable. The blue basically means that it's flexible, you know, it's flexible. And then I sometimes play around, okay, maybe I'm a little coordinated, a little, a little bit. The green means it's social, it's fun, it's, it's, it's social, it's fun. And then red typically, so sometimes the red, the red is like, it needs to, it is a mandate. And sometimes the social is a mandate, like I might say, look, it's, it's Dr. Park's birthday, it's, you know, Mr. Johnson's graduation, it's, so like all those dates, those are permanent. So if those are red, that could be social, it could be work related, it could be whatever, but that's not moving. Black typically, like the standard black is typically, this is some, this is a meeting, this is something professional, this is something work, career related, and it's, it might be movable, but you know, it's something, it may be a meeting or a meetup with somebody, it may be a call, a catch-up, but it's in black, right? And it's flexible, like if something comes up, I can take it out, right? And then like I said, the green is social, so this might be something like, oh, a lunch date with somebody, you know, a catch-up with somebody or whatever. It can mean, oh, a happy hour that I got planned with, with a couple of friends or a meetup or something. It's social, it's not mandatory, it's not like I must do it, but it is something that is already on the calendar. And so that green lets me know if something more important comes, I can swap out. So I do do a little bit of color coordinate, I try not to be intense with that, but I do, it, it do help a little bit. But I just feel like, you know, many of you all listen to this podcast around my age or in that area, arena-ish, um, we're gonna talk about Shannon Sharp and all of that in a minute. Of course, I just wanted to put that out there, we are gonna get into that, um, very, very soon. But I, you know, a lot of you are there, so you know, this is like part of adulting and some things I learned, I, you know, I, I share, you know, I'm not somebody who's a gatekeeper to all the things in the world to be great, everybody can be great. If, if everybody stays in their lane, read the room and, uh, you know, do what they supposed to do, right? That's my take at least, but yeah, April's been a lot. Um, and, and this past weekend was, was epic in so many different ways. Um, but one good thing is I'm wrapping up my spring semester at CCP, but funny enough, I'm coming back May 12th, uh, for summer courses. I'm teaching the first half of the summer, um, so that is its own journey. But you know, we, we, we love to get paid more, we, and we just love, you know, look, I'm backed by popular demand, I mean, that just, you, you get the people what they want, you know? So I got a nice little, I, I think I have a break, but really I, I wouldn't even call it a break because in between that time, I'm still gonna be doing, I mean, I'm not teaching, so it is a slight little, what, two week, three week break sorta, cuz I'm not on the routine teaching schedule, um, for that time period. So there is some relaxation, but I, but at the same time, there is, you know, there is other things happening in the midst, so it's, it's, it's going, it's gonna go by quickly. But it's still lighter because I'm only teaching public speaking, um, which is a 7A course, which is seven weeks. And it's one thing to juggle three courses and have to grade, but it's another thing to do that coupled with everything else. So it is a, it is lighter, but also still, you know, work. But I love teaching public speaking and if there was any course I did, I would teach for summer, it would be public speaking because it's, it's very interactive, it's, it's more of me coaching, my coaching SI comes out more. Yeah, I do some teaching of course, but it's more of coaching. And so that's just, I, I just, you know, that kind of mentoring and guiding type of technique for the summer is an easier lift versus being real technical and having to go really theoretical in my approach, which I don't mind doing and I can do really well as, as well, but you know, summer is like, you just wanna just tell people how to do something. And it, it, it just be able to just say yes and no, maybe so, and move on versus, I don't, like I, this semester, some of the courses I taught, um, you know, we were, it was, in many ways, it was, it was give and take, so it was more like, yeah, there was discourse and sometimes you can discourse and debate through. And students are critical thinkers and we love that, right? We do as professors, look at me. But you still want, you know, there's times you're just like, oh, my goodness, yes, yes, but, and, but learning requires people, you know, a give and a take sometimes. And sometimes you can find yourself a little frustrated as a professor, cuz you're just like, okay, that is one thing to consider, however, that is not important, let's stay focused. I find myself in those dynamics, cuz there's some people that really be thinking, but I tell people at the end of the day, the day gotta end. And what I mean by that is you can think and, and play devil's advocate all around something, but sometimes you have to consider what's the, what's the bigger factor and, and stick to a plane and land on it, okay? And I think that's what I try to get my students, I find it with like male students specifically, my straight male students, they, I, I've noticed a pattern that they typically have this strong ability to question the validity of anything, even just facts, like everything that does not necessarily comfort their perspective already must be interrogated to the highest degree. And sometimes that can be annoying, just being real as a professor, because you wanna move on with the class or move on with a topic or move on, and you find that there's certain people that's just like stuck on something. And I have found myself, it is, it's interesting, like I've noticed this pattern through several years, whether, you know, where I was at Chaney, now CCP, it's a pattern. And I think it, what does it say about gender and dynamics and identity? But that is a pattern I've noticed, is that, and these are Gen Zers, most, most of them are Gen Zers. I'm looking at these stats and I'm like, hmm, 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 there's a reason for this. This is not, this is not just a random, huh, it's a hmm, because we see this in society right now and there's a pattern of what I'm noticing is that we're seeing a, I'm sorry, not an, mm, we're seeing an emergence, that's what I was saying, went to say. We're seeing an emergence of younger men coming into the academy that are not just thinking critically about philosophical ideals and ideas that we would say, um, are just worth debate, right? Like women that I've taught, um, naturally will consider various facets of, of theories and approaches, which is what I love to discuss. And this might sound very wonky to some folks, but this is a smart audience that listens to this podcast, so y'all picking up what I'm putting down. Like, we can debate theories and approaches of ideas, right? That's fine, that's what the discussion is. But I have found teaching this semester, in this past year actually, that why not even, before I could even discuss and have discourse about actual things worth having different points of views on, I'm spending an interesting amount of time discussing facts. Like actually, before I can even get into theory or into any discussions of different views and varying points of, of ideas and, and things of that nature, before I can even get into ideas and debate ideas, I am debating facts. And that's been very interesting. Just things that we all know or, or things that at a college level, we should all kind of understand, or there are just basic non-disputables, is now coming up for debate. So, you know, a good example that I, that I would, that, that, that came up in conversation recently was, I was discussing Title IX in class and, you know, I said, hey, we were just talking about boundaries between professors. This is so interesting cuz this is the Shannon, this is the Shannon Sharp, I mean, this is, this, this episode is gonna, a lot of patterns is gonna lay the foundation for that big conversation coming up in this episode. But one of the things that I was talking to my students about, um, last week, and this is even before Shannon Sharp situation happened, but I was talking about, hey, like professors, boundaries, consent, Title IX, just in a larger scheme about, cuz we're, we're encouraging, we, as professors, we need to, what we're realizing and, and what we've been talking about in departments is that students are signing codes of conduct, um, without really reading codes of conduct. Like students are getting guides and manuals of important information about how to report things, all this, but they're really not actually fully aware. And so at CCP and in most colleges, all colleges, students are provided handbooks, codes, all these things when they, you know, they supposed to take trainings and things when they get into, get oriented, um, into any types of programs. And we see this with jobs, right? All jobs, if you're, if you're teaching, like you gotta go through mandatory sexual harassment training, mandatory, um, reporting, mandatory, you gotta do all the trainings for the job. And if you're a teacher, specifically a professor, you gotta do all of those modules and videos and all those trainings. So something that came up, um, in conversation, I said, well, you know, as you all know with Title IX, and half of the room looked at me confused like they never heard Title IX, didn't know what Title IX meant. And so I spent some time, just, you know, just a little brief overview about what Title IX is and how it pertains to their academic learning. And so something in the conversation, I said, you know, it's important, you know, part of this is around consent, if there is somebody who violates consent, you can report it, blah, 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 blah. And there was a couple of students was like, well, what do you mean by consent? And I said, consent means, like explaining what consent meant, so I said, it's the verbal coherent agreement of one to their, you know, body autonomy in a situation that involves sex, um, pretty much that the person is giving a very clear, unforced, um, unintimidated, um, agreement, mutual agreement to partake in whatever physical activity that is being proposed or is happening, right? And I made it clear, I said, what I mean by unforced is that there can't be manipulation, so you cannot intoxicate the person, you cannot coerce the person, forcing them with bodily threats or harm, you cannot physically intimidate them, any of those situations, um, that occur to get the quote unquote yes, is compromised. And so I'm very verbal about this and whatnot, the women in the room, queer people in the room, specifically the students in the room are like, yeah, duh, like nodding their head in agreement. There were some cis het men in the room that were very much like, well, I don't understand, like that's tricky, that's, that's slippery. I'm like, what's slippery about it? And I normally don't have that type of, you know, question markness with my students when it comes to facts, but something to me just, I don't know, you know, my tone typically is often, oh, okay, well, what are you confused about? Oh, please do share, can you elaborate? I just kinda had a moment that was like a little crass, I was like, what is confusing about it? Like, you know, and I was like, ooh, let me get back in mode, cuz, but, you know, I wasn't gonna say my bias showed, but I was kind of like, that was a part of me that was like, it wasn't Professor Owens coming out, I was about to be like, excuse me? But I was like, there was that moment. And so this student was just like, well, I think it could be slippery because if you, if both, what if both of you all are, are, are intoxicated or whatever, I said, well, listen, what we're not going to do is create a bunch of stere-, you know, circles. If both people are, are incoherent, then neither one of you all who don't know each other are in a situation where there is consent, uh, or a clear, clear consent should be getting involved in the practice. If you, if you don't, if there is some insurance that you could get consent before any level of intoxication, intoxication being used as the way to get it is coercion, so therefore it's not consent. Like I'm being, again, like this is a mathematical equation, we, we can't, you're not going to talk your way. So they then continue to want to push back and go, well, um, well, I just, I, I, I just think that some people, that might be what they need to consent. I said, if you feel like, so what are you saying? So again, once again, trying to be graceful, but also getting to a level where you're saying something and you're saying something that you're implying something that you might not wanna imply, because honey Houston, we have a problem. They, they want to imply, well, what if, well, they said it out loud, they said, well, what if that, it might, that sometimes you might need things, they said it just like this, need things in order to get someone to get comfortable, make, maybe they won't be as open unless they are comfortable. I said, well, who are you to decide that? Yeah, so then I got a little, then I got a little, so then my whole tone changed because I'm just like, what, what are we getting here at, right? So I said, well, who are you to decide that? And the room was like, oh shit. Everybody in the room was like, oh shit, what you about to say? Cuz at this point, you might wanna stop here, but this is the part where audacity meets reality and it's the part where you're supposed to stop yourself. Oh no, the audacity of this young man was like, well, you know, I, I mean, I feel like I got a good sense of when, 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 when I feel like I can turn it up and turn it up. I said, and that is robbing someone of their agency and that could put you on grounds of violating someone's consent, which could possibly put you in a position of rape. That slippery part that you're talking about, it's right there when you're choosing over someone else, because consent is about individual agency. And the moment you think that you can decide someone's agency is you taking it away, which is basically rape. You can hear a pin drop in that room. And I said after that, are you unsure what that means? Is there any more questions that you have? Yeah, I kinda got a little spicy, a little saucy, but I, I was just like, is there anything else? I mean, is there any, is there any confusion at this point? Cuz I, at that point, I was like, is there something you want to tell the class? That's what I was about to say, if there was another question. Oh no, he said, oh, got it, understood. Good, maybe sometimes people need to learn that way. We gonna teach some type of way in these classrooms. Someone might ask, you didn't need to go back and forth with him. No, sometimes it's a learning lesson that was for him, but other people in that class. There were some other guys in that room that initially was kinda feeling what he was saying, but when I started to dive deeper into that discussion, it was very clear to them, they started learning. And sometimes confrontational learning is effective. Sometimes you have to set an example, sometimes you have to really course correct something, and sometimes you have to pick and choose when those are the right times. I think a conversation about consent, if, if there was no professor that was going to challenge and really get this guy together in a room where other people can learn and see it, it reinforces a, a different balance. And I think some teachers and some people, even in friend circles, let people just have these thoughts and just say, oh, that's who they are. You understand that you could be changing a life. Because somebody like him can never say, moving forward, that I need to do anything to get someone's consent. In other words, this person was trying to figure out the difference between coercion and consent. And some people, even grown ass adults, a lot of grown ass adults don't know that difference. If you feel like you gotta give someone a drink or get somebody high or whatever to get them to do something that you feel like they couldn't do prior to, and your answer is, how do you verify whether or not it's consensual, is I have that cert-, that, but, excuse me? You have what? No, you're making a decision on someone's behalf. And that is rape. You don't get to violate people's space, you don't get to assume what is best for them in a situation. That, that's how you get it, yourself in trouble. And so it was important for me to say that, cuz that individual, I believe he was 19, young adult. It's important for someone like him to, to know that, because as he plans to transition and go into other spaces, somebody should told somebody, some few times, there needs to be that space as a black man to tell another young black man, hey, let me let you, let me let you know right now, because this is what happens. You have people that have these thoughts at very young ages and no one checks them, no one tells them, hey, this ain't it, this is not that, these are the facts, don't think you can skip over these details, every detail matters. We gotta do that more, everybody has to do that more, not just black men, everybody in their own spaces when it comes to it. White people, y'all gotta check other white people when it comes to racist shit, because you all let a lot of stuff slide and then you go back and you tell your black friends the stuff that you know, and my question goes in my head, what the fuck did you say? Well, what was your response? Did you, did you tell them, did you do the work? No, you just shut up and mind your business? Oh, you said, oh, I don't wanna go back and forth, oh, I was just too disgusted to say something? Well, then why are you telling me something then? You should be just as disgusted to tell a black person about something racist that you experienced. You should be just, I mean, cuz that's what, I'm telling y'all this story, right? You was probably saying, well, what did Ernest do to check him? Oh, Ernest definitely, Professor Owens definitely did address it. I can tell you the story, cuz I can tell you how it ended. It ended with him having no questions or confusion about the difference between coercion and consent. So what I'm showing you right now is what I want you all to do in your realities, when you all see problematic things. Don't tell your gay friend, oh, there was this homophobic guy at my job that did this thing and said, my question gonna be, what did you do? And what did you do? Nothing? You just sat on that? Oh, okay. You part of the problem. I told somebody that a couple of weeks ago. It was not a friend, it was a associate, I would say, that came to me and just wanted to just, it was at an event and wanted to tell me something that was problematic that they witnessed, and I was just kind of like, okay, so that is terrible, that was a horrible thing, what did you say? And they didn't say anything back. I was just like, so you just sat there and you just heard this and you just, interesting? And I said, well, that's part of the problem right there, not saying anything. And they were like, oh, you right, you right, well then shit, prove me wrong. But, but that's what I, I think we all have to do more of. I definitely But, but that's what I, I, I think we all have to do more of, um, I definitely do. I, I'm not afraid, because my mindset is, if the intentions are pure, if you're, if you're trying to do the right thing, you, you shouldn't have, and there shouldn't be any fear, there shouldn't be any reservations or anything like that when it comes to doing the right thing and, and, and keeping it one hundred. That's just where I stand on it. Some people might think differently, but, huh, come on now. Um, but yeah, wrapping up teaching at CCP this, this last week, the last day was last, uh, this past Monday. So right now, if you're listening to this podcast on a Monday, my Core Two Hundred, y'all, y'all just great, then you all know that Mister, Mister Owens, Professor Owens is not in class. Professor Owens is enjoying these next couple of weeks before I have to go back into summer. Um, but it's been great, it's, this has been a great, like, having a chance, ability to be able to really teach while being a journalist, while doing everything else and finding that, that perfect situation, and the situation that is paying, right? I get paid, like, I just think that's so important. I was just talking to a mentee of mine recently, it's like, the sweet spot is being able to do these things and being able to get paid your worth, and to be able to get opportunities to grow other things, like that is the goal. Like I am living the dream, I am doing the thing. And so I'm just internally grateful for that, like, people always are like, oh, what about this, what about that, all these things. I'm like, I just feel like if you're doing the things that you're passionate about, and you're being able to, it, it works for you, not against you. I think sometimes people do things like their hobbies, their projects, their, their side things that just feel like they're eating at other things, they can't balance. I don't have that, all of the things that I work on, fortunately, are things that is pushing my dreams and my goals. There's nothing that I'm currently doing right now in my life, whether through leadership, through work, through career, whatever, that is in, and, that is antagonizing or eating away from anything I'm passionate about. Some people cannot say the same, and it, like, the goal is to figure out how to do that, right? Like, I feel like the work that I'm doing in all of the respective places, all these things are finding synergy and alignment that is pushing the larger passion and goals that I have for my life and my career. It's not working against it, it's aiding towards it. Everything is, everything is working, everything I'm getting paid to do is taking me further steps ahead of where I wanna be. That's important, and I think, when people's like, well, how do you have time to do all this stuff? I'm like, what do you mean, all this stuff? This stuff is my career, this stuff is my life. It's not, it's not, like, when I go to these events, when I go to restaurant tastings, when I do all these different things that I do, it's all in alignment to my own personal, you know, self-care, career journey paths. Like, nothing I'm doing is like, oh, I gotta do this thing, I don't like doing this, this is just a waste of time, or, oh, I'm, I'm doing this because of whatever. Like, all of this is, is, is working towards what I'm passionate about. And unlike some people that they treat such work as, as labor to get to something. For me, all these things that I'm participating in is paying, most of it. Some of it is volunteer, but a lot of it is a means to an end. And so it's not just, oh, you got, you made this TV appearance, um, actually I got paid to do that. Uh, oh, you're sitting on this panel, you're, you're doing this speaking thing, that's cool. Like, for me, I get paid to do it, it's a part of my work, like, I am, this is my career. Um, that's important. And I think people, what I encourage folks is, if you're in a space where you're not passionate about what you're doing, or you don't see what you're doing as fueling your career passions or goals, start evaluating a timetable. Create a timeline for yourself on, why am I doing this? What needs to be done? How do I plan to get out of this, to get to where I need to be? And how do I make the right adjustments and, and things? Because it gets played, it gets played out in some cases where you're like, people are just consistently just doing, 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 but not really being thoughtful about what, putting themselves in positions that moves them further on personal goals. And if you don't know what those goals are, take some time to figure out what those goals are, but if you know what they are, you know them well, then what are you doing to seriously put yourself in, in a, in a, a good position to further advance that? It might take some level of, I don't consider it sacrifice, but for a lack of a better word, there might be some different types of sacrifice for other things that need to be on the back burner in order to make those things work. But you gotta figure out what you're trying to go for, are you trying to go for a dream, or you're trying to go for simple comfort? And I think some people are more interested in being comfortable for guaran-, guaranteed comfort versus a level of, there might be a, a placement of discomfort to get to maximum comfort. And so for me, when I think about my beginning, my career, you know, when I first graduated from college, I decided not to go the corporate route in media. I stayed in a four fifty a month studio apartment, I stayed, you know, in, on Fiftieth in West Philly. And, you know, it was a studio apartment, it was small, but it was four fifty, it was affordable. It was not the fanciest spot at all, it was not, it did what you need to do temporarily. And I stayed there for the first about three years, the first three years of my career, until Mister Johnson graduated. And then we moved into a place together and much nicer place, and then we moved on up further down after marriage. But each of those milestones, when I look at where I was at, I was acting my wage, but I was also being mindful about what needs to get done. Do I spend all this money out of college and invest in all this furniture, do all these things, for what? I didn't host anyone in my studio when I first lived there, I, I don't think I had anyone over there except my boyfriend, now husband at the time. I just was like, look, I'm not in a position to host at my place, I can't host dinners, I can't host parties. I just, this is just, you know, I'll go to everybody, I, I was always going to everybody else's house and bringing wine. I was always going out to happy hours and dinners and things, but that's just what I, I couldn't do that at that point, because that was just not where I was si- situation wise. Um, I took a part-time job teaching when I was freelancing, but this was what I wanted, because this is what I needed to do. Like, I need to get out here right, I need to get my name out there. I couldn't wait for some shiny job to come, I need to get my ass in this industry fast, and I need to take what I could get to build and grow me. I did that for about a year and a half before Philly Mac came knocking. And then when Philly Mac came knocking, money, more money came, and at that time, I still didn't just uproot myself. I waited until my boyfriend, later husband, Mister Johnson graduated in twenty seventeen. Then I was like, you know what, if I'm gonna move into a one bedroom and somewhere nicer and whatever, I wanna transition with, not a roommate, but with my man. And at that point, we had been together for three years, so we were, you know, we were, we were a long-term relationship, we was in some serious mode. And then we said, okay, let's, let's, I could upgrade, and then we upgraded. And, and at that point, that was a better, you know, moving up. But I wanted to go in on something fancier, bigger. At this point, careers increasing, money's increasing, opportunities increasing. Also, now with somebody who's also gainfully employed, we're both doing it, then we said, let's take it to the next level. At that point, if I was making an upgrade, we, at that point, we was, we was engaged. We stayed at our last place, not the place I currently live at, but the last place I stayed at, we stayed there for five years. Just building our money, saving, we was like, look, if we're gonna, we got, I got engaged in twenty nineteen. So I stayed at the last place, at that point, it was at the two-year mark, we were like, okay, we're gonna plan the wedding, we're going to, we're not gonna move or do any major changes until we're married. Because I was like, let, like, there's no need to uproot ourselves, because the strategy was, we're gonna get married, wedding gifts is gonna be, we're gonna really, our wedding gifts are gonna be focused on what stuff we want for the new place. So we spent two years hoarding and getting a storage of all the appliances, all the stuff. And we did not use anything, like, we got new blenders, new plates, new stuff. We had stuff coming in from inventory, from the registry for like gifts and things for our engagement for two years. I mean, mini fridge, wine fridge, coolers, uh, uh, air fryers, pots and pans, knives, all this shit. We had two years of all new appliances, and we said, we're not, we're not moving until we get everything. And then once we got all of our inventory, once we got married, once our lease was up, twenty twenty-two, we relocate in a brand new luxury building that was not too far from where we currently live. And the crazy part was, while that building was getting built, we was literally building our lives. And now the place we live at is grand, I mean, I throw parties, I host dinners, we just, we just live, it's just gorgeous. And, and all of our, our new place got all of our appliances, we have to buy any new shit. Our housewarming party didn't mean anything, all we got was tons of wine, because all the things we had saved and we built into, we, we was able to. And that's a storyline of like, that's ten years of building up to a point. And that gradual build of being able to save money, to, to make smart investments, to, to just gradually climb as I climbed, it was a, a, I don't like to wear a humbling experience, but it was a very mindful experience. And it made me understand money better, and made me understand that I don't need to compete or compare, that my journey is my journey, and I'm in a race with myself. Because so many young people, and so many people I know, and I didn't even expect this was gonna be the opening of this damn show. But sometimes stuff hits you, and you're like, I need to say this to people out loud, because somebody's listening to this right now and they're going, you know what? Yeah, right? Because people will put you, you're around people, and that, that was intense for me, because I'm graduating wherever I live in school. A lot of people that I went to school with is moving into luxury apartments, duplexes and shit in New York and Jersey. They're getting these crazy jobs, and you're thinking, that's what, that's what I need to do immediately to prove that it was worth it. But what I've learned about return on investment and about creativity and brilliance, is that the return on investment is not, is, 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 is a marathon, not a sprint. It's not an instant gratification, you get the pin degree, you get whatever you're doing, whatever degree you're getting. And I told this to my brother who is graduate from TIB, I was like, you do what you gotta do to get situated. The return on investment is not an instant gratification. And anybody around you that assumes that you gotta get a degree and automatically have all of this shit immediately, that's a lie. And also, whose time clock, who gets to determine and define your success and how you need to do for you, based on your circumstances? So I always tell people, people look at me now and they say, oh, you're so fancy, your dish, your caviar chipping. Oh, absolutely the fuck I am, but you know what? I built it, I built this, I, I took my time, there was no rush, baby, I was a dog, not a mutt. I'm remixing a great song that I, I love that, I can't stop listening to that Leon song, I love the song. But I say this to say that I took my time. And now I'm in a space where I don't have any level of imposter syndrome, guilt, any type of feeling anyway. I live my life to the fullest, I do what I do, I have earned it. Because I took the time to be wise and smart about the process, and not feeling this need to prove anything to anybody. There's people who did not know what I was doing ten years ago, did not get what Ernest Menny Empire meant, did not understand why I was working the places I was working, doing the work I did. It's not for me to explain or educate anyone about a journey that I know. When you understand yourself and understand what you're trying to accomplish, whether or not other people get it is neither nor a consequence of what I need to know for myself. The problem becomes when you don't know what you're doing and why you're doing it, you don't understand your journey, you don't understand what you're trying to achieve. Yeah, it's easy for people to compromise, because they can take you in one way and the other. For me, I knew very clearly what this journey was gonna be, what the plan was, and so I, I always kept my head on a swivel. I didn't give a fuck about where, what other people was doing. People were telling me, you should be here, you should work here, no, I'm good, cuz I knew what I wanted to do. I knew what was the balance and what made sense to me. I don't gotta explain every method to my madness. I do believe in transparency when it involves other people, but there's things in my mind that I have sought through to understand what I want and why I want it. And that takes a lot of time in solidarity, that takes a lot of time in, in solitude, I meant solitude. You have to be, there needs to be, I give myself time, I spend a lot of time with myself, thinking and just processing. And I don't think a lot of people take time to themselves to really just process and think about the things you're doing, why you're doing it, who you're doing it with, like, giving yourself a peace of mind and time. Too often, we gotta, we, we just running, 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 you know, I, I gotta, I need this, but don't take some time to just breathe and fucking reflect. And I, I find that I give myself that time on a daily basis, to just, if it's called meditation, whatever, meditate, whatever. But I'm sitting and I just think. And that allows me to think, it allows me to write well, it, it allows me to do this podcast the way that I do it, because I put a lot of thought, and I think some people feel like they cannot just sit to themselves alone, then grapple and wrestle with things. I do a lot of that. And I hope it comes across in my writing, I hope it comes across in what I produce, that nothing is rushed over here. But how do you get to something and do it right without rushing? It's because you're proactive, you reflect, you just don't do things because everyone tells you that's what you should do. You, you wonder, how does this really connect to me? Not, oh, I heard. Yeah, it's great to hear things, right? But it's also, wh- why am I doing this? Is it in my heart? Is it in my mind, is it in my soul, is it, is it driving me and motivating me to move and act? Give yourself that time to do that, and be honest. And be honest, and give people transparency, if it doesn't work out with certain partnerships, collaborations, whatever the case is. Be realistic. Be very mindful, be very demure, do all the things. Um, because I think just to me, I, I see so many people in my orbit, in my network, and I'm looking at them, I'm like, you're just reacting. You're not actually reflecting. Are you reacting, are you reflecting? Ask yourself that question, everything you do, are you reacting, are you reflecting? Are you simply reacting to something, are you reflecting on it? A lot of what I do is a reflection. It's a reflection of, of things I have thought about, things I've talked about, things I've wrestled with. A lot of people are not reflecting right now, they're reacting, they're simply reacting. Where's the reflection? We're seeing that in the White House, we're seeing that in the city government, we're seeing that in nonprofit leadership, we're seeing that with these colleges and universities. A lot of people are reacting, they're not reflecting. I reflect, I don't react. People are like, somebody said this, what you gonna do? I gotta think about it. When I say I gotta think about it, that means I gotta reflect. And when you get that clapback, there was a lot of thought into that clapback. See, I just don't just react on every little thing, I think about it, I meda-, meditate on it, I process it. Because when I officially will respond, right? That response gotta have reflection. And so are we reacting to things or reflecting on things? Think about it, reflect on that. But moving along, um, there's been some great news, um, I'm super excited to finally be able to announce this, and this, you know, was making its waves on the internet. I am very proud and honored to announce that I have landed on the forty under forty list for Alpha Phi fraternity incorporated. Um, they, this is the third class, which is, we do everything in Greek letters, so this is the gamma class, cuz you know it's alpha, beta, gamma. So alpha's first, beta second, gamma third. So I'm part of the, three times the charm, I'm part of the gamma class of Alpha Phi fraternity incorporates forty under forty list, which is their entire fraternity, our entire, thousands of thousands of brothers. And we have thousands and thousands of brothers under the age of forty that is achieving and doing incredible things in various industries all across the world, okay? Cuz we are international fraternity, we have people, we have chap-, we have alpha chapters in, in Europe, in the Bahamas, in Africa, like, all across the world, across various continents, y'all. Like, this is epic. And so to be one of the forty under forty, out of all of these incredible black men that are doing incredible work around the world, um, is touching, especially in such a short timeframe in Philly, um, in, in just my city and my fraternity, like, one year, um, a little over a year in, to be embraced and honored and recognized in this type of way is just very touching. And just another reminder for myself on this journey, that everything happens for a reason, and everything happens at the right time. And the timing of this couldn't have been any better. Like, I always tell people, there's always reflection in it, like, this time, this moment, it just hits different. Had I done this, or thought I should have done this much earlier, Had I done this or thought I should have done this much earlier, I would not have the feeling I have right now. And so, timing, it's timing. It's, 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 it's divine. Yeah, it's, it's strategically be, it's being strategically situated. You know, it's just all of those things. And I think sometimes people get so caught up in, you know, just chasing timelines, chasing patterns, chasing whatever, you know, they think people want them to do. And so we, we gotta get to a place where we, we evolve and, and grow and think. But yeah, I just, that was just a great experience. That, that's just, that just takes the cake from me. So that's going on. Went to a lovely wine and cheese on Sunday, um, Sunday afternoon, wine and cheese. It was a mixer with some fraternity brothers. That, we sophisticated. We just don't do barbecues and, and turn up parties. We love a good galas and cheese and wine. It was, it was a good old timeout. Um, but yeah, it's, 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 yeah, I'm just, I just cannot wait to. As you all know, the Alpha is having our national general convention in July in Philly. So I'm gonna be deep into all of that, um, which is gonna be fun. There is also so much other planning going on for July. I'm like, each time I turn around, July is gonna be, July is gonna be Julying. But you know, what, what, what can I say? So other, you know, um, other great things that's happening, um, that just hit me uh, is that this week there was a lot of restaurants, um, a lot of interesting restaurant openings and things. For starters with me, I went to, I'm trying to figure out how do I want to, uh, unpack some of this because thi- this is a tale, it is, is almost like what I'll call a tale of two black owned restaurants, um, but also a tale of different dining. But before I get into, um, the dining situation altogether, um, because I know that comes with its own, um, experience. I did some great, I, I, I had a lot of fun at Farmer John's Field Trip. Now Farmer John is, her, her real name is Krista Barfield. And I've talked about Farmer John in the past on this show. But Farmer John is, um, she is the, she won the James Beard Award last year. Um, in service, actually, very competitive James Beard Award, actually, because it's one of those service awards where it's not based on restaurants, but it's based on like culinary advocacy work. And this is competitive because it's, it's work being done all across the country and different people win it. But, um, Farmer John was selected. Um, she's a farmer. Um, she is the largest food grower and black food grower in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania across the board. So she is not just, you know, just a, a, a black owned farm in Philly. She's across the state of Pennsylvania, the largest black food grower. She's currently working to, her, her farm is organic, is certified, it'll be certified next year. It'll be one of the few, um, farms in, 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 on the east coast to be certified organic. A lot of farms in Pennsylvania do not certify as organic often because of the cost and the, all the, all the things they need to do. Um, it, it's a lot. Um, and, and she's, she's done a lot of great work, you know? She, she began farming with just a, you know, four by six greenhouse in her backyard in Germantown, which is where she's from. Which is only like 24 square feet, which is like a small little closet for those who know how to do metrics. Y'all know me and metrics and measurements, like I bought myself a sixty-five inch TV, you know, and did not big screen TV and thought it was gonna be a little small one. So to put it in context, that four by six is basically the size of a, of twenty-four square feet. It's basically the size of a small closet. But she taught herself how to grow herbs, um, and, and all that without any formal agricultural training. But just a passion for food. Um, and that greenhouse, you know, she made some herbal honey products that really took off. And then it really evolved into so many different, um, you know, iterations. Now it's gonna be a store, you know, it has a storefront from north, it was a storefront in Northwest Philly. And now she's got this huge farm that's a hundred and twenty acres, um, in Westchester. And it's right next to Cheney, which is where I used to teach. And the fact that it's right next to Cheney, which is the first HBCU in America, the first HBCU. Literally, okay, I know they talk about Lincoln. Lincoln is the first to give degrees. Cheney's the first HBCU, period. She's right next to there in Westchester. And she's doing a lot to, you know, talk about food production and growing. And just black farmers in this country, the level of concerns, they've been facing a lot of hardship. But she's been able to really build. And so the cool thing that she has right now that I'm a big huge fan of is she has these field trips that she do every Saturday. And a lot of you all, I went, I, I had the trip. It was myself, it was my lit brother, um, George. I went with, um, the reclaimed, which is my homegirl Whitney. Um, she's with the Philly Download, of course, which I advise on. Um, my younger brother went, uh, Mr. Johnson went, um, Laura, my homegirl Laura from Philly Mag. And a couple of other guests and stuff. We all went on this cool trip. Um, I heard about it. That she was doing these field trips. They did the launch this past weekend and I just wanted to see what all the fuss was about. So for ten bucks, right, ten bucks, there is a round trip. From, there's a location that you meet, we was, we was on the, um, row, the rowboat area where all the, the docks and all the rowing crew people are. We were over there, that was the pickup spot. And basically you meet there at like 10 a.m. They pick you up. They take everybody, right? We go on a bus and the bus is like a, they take us on a bus all the way to the farm. It's a round trip and it's only 10 bucks and you book everything through FarmerJohn.co. And so you go there, you book the trip, um, and it's every Saturday. When you get on the bus, there are, they, they have a nice little set of snacks. So they, uh, they have this nourish juice that is like another fresh farm juice that they have that that's at the shop. We'll get to that shop in a minute. But there's like, you get this, but you get these nice organic, um, fruit juices, um, that are really good. And you get to try some of the fresh produce. They had apples and oranges that are from the farm. And all of this is organic, fresh produce and things. And it's like, they give you some history about the farm before you get there. And then the, the bus takes you there, they pull up and you get this nice like thirty minute like tour of the farm. And, you know, Farmer John herself, this incredible black woman is like giving us a tour of her farm. We get to see all the different land. We see, um, the chickens, we see the chicken coop, we see where the eggs are getting produced. We're seeing, um, the tractors, we're doing all of this. This is a very earthy, fun, dope experience. And then at the end, you go to the farm shop, which is like her own farmer's market. She has all the produce from the farm, other, uh, local, um, vendors and farms and other Pennsylvania vendors. All these great organic produce and, and, and products and food. And there's a cool tasting, get to try some of the products before you get to buy them. And there's like specialty discounts. Here's the real cool dope thing. That ten dollars that you spent transformed into a coupon that you can use as a discount on what you buy there. And they have some really great items. Like I lost my mind in there. Like both my brother and I, it was like the trip of a lifetime. Like he was into it, like, and I was so happy. He was into it. He got, um, some chicken, um, that they had to farm, some, some organic chicken. We bought ice cream, we bought all these juices, candles, um, cheese. They had this really good, um, aged cheddar that was really good. Um, I got, oh my God, I got these chips. It was just so much stuff. They, they had all types of local produce. I spent over a hundred fifty bucks in there. Yeah, I, we racked it up, but it was combining. And Mr. Johnson got some stuff. We got some dill pickles that was from this farm. It was just so good. They had pasta and it was crazy. It, it, listen, it was popping in there. That store was a hit. We all got to walk away with a plant and a pot. So I got, I got my own plant, a parsley. They also had tomato leaf that they gave us, like plants to do our own growing. And we got back around a little over about one o'clock. So it was a nice little three hour little trip in the morning to afternoon. So I didn't, it did not take away my whole day. But it was like a nice get up in the morning, have a great little afternoon. We got back around one-ish. Round trip, baby. Round trip. So if you want to do this, this is every Saturday, all through the summer. So it's great. It's a great way to support a black owned farm. It's a great way to just get outdoors. It's just a fun, it's so affordable, it's so accessible. Like do this, like do this. This is like, it's crazy. Like I, I wanna go again. Like I have to do this again. Like I wanna do it again. And also they're organizing buses. Like if you got a good group of friends that you wanna do a thing with, like, like, it was like, we did a trip, like it was all of us, like a little family friends trip that we did. But we're definitely gonna do it again. She's also doing like farm, like farm field dinners. Like she's planning like dinners and stuff there in coordination with this. There's a lot she's doing at this farm. And she's about to have, um, Farmer, not Farmer, Farmer John, but it's gonna be called, um, Farmer John Store or Shop, and it's gonna be in Kensington. Um, and it's coming out later this summer. But there's going to be an actual farmer's shop storefront or farm shop that she's gonna have in Kensington. That's gonna also sell products from the farm and everything else. But this farm tour, trip tasting thing, y'all, it, it doesn't get any better than that. It, it doesn't. It's called, uh, Corner John is what it's gonna be called. She loves John. It's so Philly centric, but it's called Corner John. And it's, it's gonna be fantastic. You just have to go. And a lot of you all have been messaging me on my DMs about it. Um, y'all know I was gonna review it in the podcast because like, come on, like those pictures, you all went up for it. Like I was, like you all were hype about it. It was like, I ain't no more. This is the more. And so definitely check it out, um, FarmerJohn.co, dot co, not com, dot co is the website. Um, they're on Instagram at FarmerJohn, John underscore. And for those who don't understand John, the spelling, it is J A W N, not J O H N. It's like John, like the Philly way of John. So Farmer, J A W N, FarmerJohn.co or Instagram FarmerJohn underscore. But it shouldn't be hard to find her. You can Google her, look her up. She's been doing this for a while. She's killing it, y'all. She's dope. And this concept is crazy. Like I could see kids going on field trips here. I can see like community groups, like this is the thing, like this is a move, this is a wave. And the bus is a, it's a school bus, y'all. So they got, they can take a lot of people. So if you got a group of like twelve or twenty or whatever, trying to do something, get all of your friends to just come down here. Like people are always doing like wine tastings and trips, but this is just dope. Like there's just no excuse. I feel like by the end of this summer, I feel like everybody I know should say that they gave one Saturday to go to this. Uh, and find, check out this farm. Cause y'all always looking for something to do. And this is fun. It's family friendly. Oh, it's family friendly too. Like you can bring kids, like bring your kids, like they love that. Like there was a cute little boy who won the farmer's that's on the, on the, um, on the land. He had a son, he had a son with him and he was like this little boy. And he had his little boots on, his little, his little hat on. He was out there just feeding the chickens. It was so cute. It, it's just, ah, stuff like that. I, I just live for things that are like one of a kind. Like I need originality. And so I was really impressed with that, um, for sure. So into my dining, I did a lot of dining, uh, this week. Um, I went to Pyramid Club. Pyramid Club was awesome. Um, I just love Pyramid Club. Y'all know I'm a proud member. I went to Pyramid Club three times this week. It's an addiction, y'all. I went to celebrate birthday, a good birthday, my good friend Chris Bartlett, um, who was retiring from the William Wade Center this June for Pride Month. So, you know, I already got on the calendar, see, making them count the plans, cause he's gonna have a farewell party in June. I can't, I look forward to going. Um, but we had dinner there and it was fabulous. Then they had a, a prime rib, um, situation that was there um, on Thursday night. And I had that with my good friend, um, Kelly. We had dinner, was catching up. And then Friday night they had a caviar and champagne tasting. And it was a caviar pairing with champagne. And I have loved champagne. I've loved caviar for a long time. But y'all, I think of a caviar, like caviar is becoming my new like addiction. Like if you wanna buy me caviar, like that's my new thing. Like I've been telling people buy me champagne, but you could buy me some caviar. Okay, I eat all types of caviar, trout roll, you name it, austoria, I'll eat it all. I am not picky. But that's my new thing. I, I do, I like caviar, y'all. So if you, if you, if you buy me a little one ounce, you don't even gotta do, you don't gotta buy me a big old jar. Some of y'all wanna go crazy. You can though. But I like a one, a one ounce is enough for me. I will sit. I, I had some caviar. Like I even got some caviar at the Pyramid Club afterwards. I, it's my little snack. It's my little thing now. It's, it's, I, I'm, I'm into it. I'm into it on aesthetic level. Like you could, let's see, look, look, look what kind of people we've become. I have a, a, a pearl of the ocean like spoon. Um, I'm into it. You know, it, it's just a queen of pearl. I think for caviar is what they call it. I've been eating, I have one and I've been eating all of my caviar with those spoons. It's a mother of pearl, um, is what they call it. You cannot eat caviar. Well, you should not. Like, listen, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna be real with y'all. One of my, you know, this is the snobbing me coming out, but whatever. One of the most cringiest things I've been seeing people do lately. And I know it's a trend and it's on TikTok or whatever, but it's disgusting and you will never catch me doing it. Is this whole thing called caviar bumps, where people are putting caviar like it's a bump. First of all, do y'all know what the bump used to be? Cause I'm gonna have to put y'all education. When people do bumps, that is normally bumps of speed or coke. So the idea of doing, like when we say let's bump into the bathroom, let's do lines, is either lines of coke. I don't partake in any of this, but I'm educated. I know what this stuff means. That if we say let's do a bump, whenever we go to a club and do a bump, that was a bump of coke that is on like the end palm of their thumb, um, between their adjacent, they would put it on the side and they would do a bump. So it was snort or whatever, okay? That's what bump of coke and bumps were. So when I hear this term, caviar bumps, I'm like, y'all, cut it the fuck out. And you already know, we don't even gotta guess who made that term up. It was someone white. I'm not doing any caviar bumps. I'm not doing any types of bumps. And first of all, that's just disgusting to put caviar on a palm like that. That is so tacky and classless, okay? No one's doing caviar bumps around me. I will never do it. First of all, caviar should properly be had on a mother of pearl spoon. Okay, it tastes better. That's the proper way to caviar. Anybody's giving you caviar on a metal spoon has no taste, no class. You go to a restaurant and they, and listen, if you put caviar on top of something, on food, by all means, knock yourself out. Caviar is delicious on deviled eggs. Caviar is delicious on certain types of like, you know, seafood and dishes. That of course, right? If we don't know what caviar eggs is, caviar is, it is basically fish eggs. But they're very rare and exquisite and they're divine. Okay? Some people don't get into caviar. I get it. But you want a mother of pearl spoon. That's what you should be eating caviar on. And I own a mother of pearl spoon. So if you would love to just gift me with a lovely caviar, one ounce of caviar, by all means, I will tear it up. And you don't even have to buy me a mother pearl spoon unless you want to. Maybe, you know, more, one is better than more. Maybe when Mr. Johnson wants some, he's not, he likes caviar, but he's not crazy about like I am, but I, it's my thing. But I like caviar. And maybe that should be my new request on my birthday list. Like champagne, I love. I'm a champagne enthusiast, but I also like caviar. So, you know, if you wanna get me an ounce of caviar as a gift, I will accept it if you wanna get out the box. But I have a caviar obsession and I just want people, you know, folks that are like, what kind of gifts do I want? If you're tired of giving me blue coat gin, which I never get tired of blue coat gin, caviar is not on the list. One ounce caviars, blue coat gins, champagne. And when I mean champagne, I mean Vuv or Moet. That's it. That's, that's my, that's my, listen, if you wanna know the Ernest Owens Gift Starter Kit, we've now have a new, we have a new additional list. Here's the list. I'm a basic bitch, but I'm a fancy basic bitch. Okay? Don't get it twisted. I like gift cards to hand in stone. I love hand in stone massage gift cards. I like Four Seasons gift cards as well. If you like to do that, I love that. I like Friday, Sunday gift cards. I like blue coat gin, okay? Either the everflower, which is my favorite, or the regular. I like one ounce caviar. I like champagne from Vuv or from Moet. That is it. I'm a basic bitch. Give me those cards, okay? Kills gift cards as well. We love Kills and we love CVS gift cards. Okay, I'm getting basic, but I love what I love. That is the starter kit. You give me any of those gifts. If you give, you walk up to me and give me one of those gifts, you're gonna hear me squeal like a teenage girl. I'm going to lose it. These are my favorite things. I used to not know what my favorite things are, but now I know. I know that anytime I see any of these things, I lose it. I lose it. Don't buy me a Telfar bag. Nobody needs to buy me a Telfar bag. I get enough of those. Don't worry about the Telfar bags, but I love Telfar bags. But Kills gift cards, CVS gift cards, hand in stone massage gift cards, caviar one ounce caviars. Get, listen, you won't hear no complaint, any complaints from me. I go crazy. I will lose it. I'll go, like I, those are the things that just gives me joy, instant smile, instant reactions. We all have those things that do that for us. Caviar is now in that, in that category. It's in that category for me now. So caviar dinner with champagne, I had it with my good girl Sharnay. Um, we had dinner there. It was fabulous. We was just catching up, just having a good old girl's time. Um, she's, she's single and she's looking to mingle and she's in Philly. And she's looking for, um, good men that are professional, decent, um, you know, they gotta be in their twenties or thirties. You know, they gotta be in their twenties or thirties. She's not looking past forty unless you really, you know, you know, you mature, but you know, not too, not too much. Um, you know, she's a single girl. She's gorgeous, and she's just having a good time. And we were just talking about dating in the world, giving her some good dating advice, just, just having a good old time. It was just a good old time. We had palm champagne. So they, it was like, it was a six-course meal. We had, like, six glasses of champagne. And we learned some fun things. Like, one thing I wanted to share with you all, some of y'all may notice, is that you do not, like, drinking champagne in its best way is actually in a wine glass. It's not a flute. Flute is just a marketing thing. It's, it's a marketing thing. Like, if you're at home and you want to drink champagne, you want to really enjoy it, and really taste it and savor it, drink it in a wine glass. That's the way you're supposed to drink, uh, champagne, um, to properly enjoy it. Now, you're asking, why flute? Then why do we have all these flute glasses? Why everybody gives it to us? Flute glass is a marketing thing. It's celebratory. Now, let me be very clear. If you're celebrating something, like, I, you know, y'all know I love me some flute glasses. I have a bunch of flute glasses. I love a good flute glass. Let's be very clear. But, the way that I've heard it is that if you like flute glasses, you could still do flute glasses. Let me be very, let me be clear, for celebrations and things. So like, I have some Tiffany flutes. I have some Lennox flutes. I love a good flute glass. The new rule of thumb is, is that flute glasses should be for celebratory things, and if you want, if you have a large crowd. So, for example, if you get a flute glass and you put some, you know, champagne or whatever in it, the reason why you do flute glasses like that for crowds is because you can be able to balance out the amount. Flute glass is typically around five ounces. So you are, the goal is not for people to really drink and the champagne in that way. It's meant to just have a celebratory toast. It's meant to just celebrate the occasion. Because champagne is expensive, oftentimes, you know, you don't wanna waste it. So you might, you know, if you get a really great champagne, which champagne is made in France. If it's not made in France, like, if you, if you see a bottle that says champagne on it, then it means it's made from France. If it's not made from France and it says champagne, they have to describe where else it comes from. Because all champagne is from France. And any gla, any bottle that says champagne, it, it has to be made from France. And it has to be, you know, actually champagne grape. So sparkling wines is different. Uh, you know, Moscato's, all of that, those are not champagnes. And sparkling wines, people confuse champagne with sparkling wines. That is not the case. Okay? Champagne is specifically made from champagne grapes in France. So if you see a bottle that says champagne, then it is from France. And if it does not, if it's not from France, it's to say Champagne de California. Cause California does make their own champagne, but it has to say that. Personally, for me, being the snob that I am in champagne world, I only drink champagne from France. I will not drink champagne from California. I will taste it, but I will never personally buy a bottle of champagne from California. That's just my, that's just my own personal preference. Now, I'm putting y'all up on game. Champagne, though, if you're at home and you have a bottle of champagne, do not feel any guilt about drinking it in a wine glass. It should be drank, it should be drank in a wine glass. Like, drink it up, okay? You do not need to drink champagne in a flute glass by yourself. Go ahead and go crazy. Now, if you have some friends, like my good Lip Brothers, there's four of us, and we popping bottles at my house, and we're just eating and drinking and being ridiculously a hot mess. We are going to drink our champagne in wine glasses because we're, we're trying to get turned. And also, it's, we're, we're celebrating, but it's not silly celebratory, right? But let me tell you this. If you're at my house for New Year's, okay, and we got champagne, we're drinking in flutes. Because one, I wanna make sure that everybody gets to try whatever that fancy bottle of champagne I'm pu, I'm popping open. And then second, I want people to, I, I want it to, it's, it's a level of aesthetic for me with the flute. But, if you are having dinner, and it's just you and your boo, or it's you and a good friend, and you all are not celebrating anything, but y'all just wanna have some champagne, and y'all wanna just have a good time, baby, get you the wine glasses. Have no shame, because that's the way it's meant to be consumed. So sometimes, if you go to certain restaurants, or you go to certain events, and you see people serving champagne and wine glasses, that's because they really want you to taste it and experience it. And they also, and, and I've been seeing this, this level where there's, like, these smaller wine glasses, and champagne's being poured into them. That is because they really want you to have the openness to really savor the flavor and the smell and the ambiance of it. Flutes close that into a certain degree. So, you are, if you are using flute glasses, you're solely doing it for the aesthetic. It's not really for tasting. But you're just wanna celebrate. And so that has put things in perspective with me, that I don't really wanna waste some of my really, really great bottles of champagne anymore in flutes. Like, I'm gonna use, like, the most standard, you know, champagnes that I have for flutes, and then the really, really big, nice, fancy stuff that I have, I'm going to use that more for real dinner. Like, wine glasses where I really want whatever friends I have to really taste and savor that champagne. So, I say all this to say, yes, that dinner was fabulous. That was, that was quite the time. And Charnay and I enjoyed it, and it was, it was just chef's kiss. So now, let me review some restaurants. I have a bad review, and I have a phenomenal gobsmacking, I love it, I'm obsessed with it, best thing in the world review. So I, I'm gonna give you not the, you know how people say, you know, do you want the good news first or the bad news? I'm gonna give you the bad news first, and I'm gonna give you the great news next. Because these are two different restaurants, and I wanna give you some feedback. So, um, Amma, or, you know, Amma, um, opened, um, um, Amira, uh, I'm just, I'm, okay, let me get my, you know, um, it's, I'm pacing myself because they just reopened, and, um, a lot of people have been hyping up about this restaurant, you know, uh, for a while, and, you know, I've been quiet about it. It's called Amina. So, let me get my, you know, it's too many others. Amma, there's Amira, which is the Greek restaurant. It's a bunch of restaurants. It's Amina. Okay, I gotta put some things in perspective. Because I think last week, I told you all about how Sin was a restaurant in Northern Liberties that shut down, right? It didn't last too long, and I had my thoughts about it. Well, news broke following that, that Amina, the black-owned soul food restaurant that was in, that's in Old City, that they opened, um, they are replacing Sin. So, they're the, they have now relocated from Old City to now Northern Liberties, where Sin is. So now, Sin no more, Amina is there. I did not go, but there are some close people that I know, very, very close. Very, very close. I'll, I'll leave it at that. Super, super close. There's a meeting in my bedroom close, okay? Very close, that went. And the review for it was not that, that, that good. Was not good. Um, you could change, you know, it's like putting lipstick on a pig. You can change the venue, the barn. You can change up the location, the, the aesthetic, but it's just not good. I've known this. I feel like at this point, I can say this because they have six other establishments. Y'all, this food is just not good. Now, let me put some clarity on this. Because I've been holding my tongue for quite some time. And I think one of the things that have annoyed me about influencer culture, cause I'm not an influencer, baby. I'm influential, but I'm not an influencer. Is that we're in this world right now where we're like, support black-owned, black-owned this, black-owned that. I get it, y'all, but let's also be, let's not get it confused. Black excellence and whatever we wanna make of that term and that word, everything that is black-owned is not necessarily black good. I am not in this monolith of a cult where, oh, anything that's black, I need to support it. That, that's just not where I'm at with this. I think what's clear is that there is something for everybody. And I think we need to be clear about what price points are, what we mean in representation, what kinda conversations we're having about restaurants, what kind of ways that we're placing things in conversation, right? And it became, this weekend, this is putting that in perspective for me. Because Friday, Amina, and then I go to the new Honeysuckles restaurant on Saturday night, which I have so much, oh, I cannot wait to talk about that next. But it puts this in full, in full concept for me. You have a lot of influencers that every time a black-owned restaurant open, they tell everybody to go. We do this by the name of capitalism. We tell people, oh, we gotta support, we gotta support, we gotta support. But sometimes, we need to be real. Are we telling, are we going to tell people to support something that's not good? And then, we then go, we don't wanna go, or people feel like it is what it is. I'm sorry, but capitalism and consumerism tells us something very different. That if you want something from somebody, it has to have something of value and substance. And identity politics alone cannot be the only reason why. It can't be. It has to be both, right? And I think we have gotten, uh, we, and I think this, this, this psychology of, of, of what, of, 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 of supporting things, like, oh, we can't criticize Shannon Sharp. He's a black man. I'm sorry, what? Excuse me? That, that's the litmus test? But these are people, even within our community, that don't understand critical race theory, do not understand actual racial politics, and understanding the dynamics of what black solidarity looks like, what support looks like, and what community looks like. And I think this whole blanket, support something cause it's black, just, is such a very vapid, very, um, myopic take on what this is supposed to look like. Um, so what does that mean, support blacks? Support black scammers, support black drug dealers, support black rapists, support black trash, support black what, right? Like, I feel like we need to unpack that. I don't need to unpack it because I'm not supporting anything black that is um, homophobic, misogynistic, um, race, racist, um, anti-black, right? I'm not, there are black things that are anti-black, right? I'm not supporting things that are bigoted. I'm not supporting anything that does any of that. I don't support gayborhood bars that are racist, and I'm gay. So, if I'm not supporting racism in the gayborhood, I'm not supporting homophobia in the black community. I'm not supporting anything that doesn't have value or does not suit the bill, fit the bill. I'm not talking about Amina specifically when I say this. I'm just talking about, because I do have concerns about Amina's politics. Because when I saw Amina, the owners, go up and support the Seventy Sixers Place Arena, I was like, hmm, those politics don't align with my politics. Because if we're talking about supporting communities, how do you support the erosion of Chinatown to say that this supports black business? Why are we juxtaposing and supporting black business against other, like, when they, when I saw Amina and their owners support the Seventy, Seventy Sixers Place Arena because they thought they would benefit off of that at the, the detriment of Chinatown, I was like, is that what we're doing? Are we gonna allow ourselves to be weaponized in this way? Why do that? Why not, why, why speak out in favor of that? Why do you need to do that? Like, you could've just not said anything. You could've said, I don't have politics. That showed me something. And so there are some black entrepreneurs in the restaurant industry, and I'm gonna speak, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep one hundred, where they're not in the business of quality, they're in the business of making money. And so, for me, cuisine is art. Cuisine is, if you're talking about restaurants, right, and dining, it's supposed to be about experience. It's supposed to be about art. It's supposed to be about taste. And it can't just be, I just wanna get asses in seats. Because if that's what you wanna do, you could become a McDonald's. And I think that's the way I look at Tyler Perry, right? Tyler Perry makes a bunch of movies every year, and many of them, most of them have no substance. Most of them are not thoughtful, they're not mindful, they're not artful, they're just bland. But you know what? Everybody likes it because it's an instant gratification, and because of the fact that, you know, he's a billionaire and he's making money. So if that's, if you're in the business of just making money, then kudos to you, make your fucking money. But if you're asking me about taste, if you're asking me about art, if you're asking me about substance, if you're asking me about culture, then don't have that conversation. So, what I'm gonna say about the Amina's Hospitality Group, if that's what we wanna call it, is that they're making money. They're expanding, they're making money. Make money, get money, cool. But it's not artful. It's not tasteful. It's not cultured. It's not elevated. It's not in the conversation of taste that I am interested in entertaining. As a food critic, as somebody who's dining in restaurants, it's just not that. They're, they're, they're riding off of vibes. It's all about a vibe. It's all about, let's go here to this thing, this, this, this park, let's fund. And let me be very clear. There's a lot of restaurants that do that in this city, okay? I, I'm, I'm not just, oh, why you talking about the black one? Stop it. Because let me also be clear. Black critics, we gotta also be willing to be honest about black things, right? I'm, I'm not blind to, oh, I only think these restaurants. Let me be very clear. Sin was not that great of a restaurant. There were some things that were good there, some items, right? I thought their brunch was better than their dinner, right? It was okay. There was some, there's some good things about it. But essentially, they were trying to be a club nightclub lounge. They had an identity crisis in Northern Liberties. There's, there's the, there's other people that throw restaurant groups that I'm like, look, if you're going for vibes, right? Teddy Servais, right? He has his, you know, Glue Hospitality, that group. They're not making restaurants that are worthy of, I think, critical acclaim and awards. They got a couple of restaurants that are good, right? I like Harper's Garden. Rosie's is okay. But like, a lot of those restaurants that they have, uh, you know, oh goodness, where, where did I begin? All those on the dock, uh, the River Deck spots, all the, 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 the Pens Landing, all them places that, that restaurants over there, uh, Liberty Point, my god. Like, those are not, like, those are not substantive places to eat, in my opinion. They're okay if you're trying to get a quick little bite in a grub. But if we're having a conversation about, like, elegance and decadence, or trying to talk about James Beard Awards, or trying to talk about something that's going to be worth the expense, that's not the conversation, you know? And so I just think we need to be clear about what conversations we're having about restaurants, and not put them in the same category. I say the same about Booker's. I used to love Booker's, okay? Years ago. Booker's now, not the same. It's not horrible. It's not great. It's okay. It's a nice little neighborhood restaurant. But I'm not having a conversation. I'm not having them in the same conversations Friday, Saturday, Sunday. I'm not talking about them on the same caliber as, you know, some of the other restaurants that I've gone to over the past year and some change. You just gotta know the range. And so I put Aminas in the Tyler Perry of Philly restaurants. It's the Tyler Perry. They're gonna have a bunch of different spots. A lot of the same things, a lot of stuff on the menus are the same. A lot of the things on those menu items are like, whatever, like chubby chicks. People are like, why have you promoted chubby chicks? The food's not good. I don't like it. I don't. It's pretty basic. It's over the top for no reason, in my opinion. It's, it's the same old, same old. I've, I've had it before. I would rather, if you wanna go somewhere that has it better, Brunchaholics is black-owned and does that better. They do it better, that version. You wanna get a better brunch experience, go to Toast Cafe. Also black-owned in West Philadelphia. Baby, I have options. And none of them are chubby chicks. But look, they're making money. Great. Great. They're making money. They're making money in the gayborhood. Wonderful. Make your money. But the food is not good. It's not all that. Maybe you might like one thing or the other. Maybe here's one thing that's okay. But it's not, it's not all that. It's, it's not worth the hype, in my opinion. But if you want an influencer that just tells you, go everywhere, cause it's black-owned, then yeah, go, support a black business if you're nearby. Great. But I have a little bit more of a standard, if you, if you really want me to be honest. And I'm not going to lie and sugarcoat shit because that dilutes my taste. You know what I mean? Like, you can listen to an album and go, that wasn't a really great album. Like the artist, believe in them, but this wasn't hitting for me. You could disagree. That's what taste is about. But if you want my honest opinion, as someone who's gone to hundreds of restaurants in Philadelphia, several black-owned restaurants across Philadelphia, every time a black restaurant opens, I go, I, I try to go and, and give it a review, right? If I don't post about it, that means I didn't like it. Uh, if I post about it, I like, anything that I post, I like, or I see the point in it, or I see the value in it. Um, or I see the point of it. I think with Amina, my struggle has been with them is, I don't understand the point of it. Like, I don't understand the rhyme or reason of the con, the restaurant concept they have, and why they have so many so fast. I feel like it, Amina as a restaurant was trying to find a groove. And then automatically, before they figured out their groove, they just started dropping all of these other restaurants, and I don't feel like anyone's having to process them. Like, Fire is trash. It's not good. Some people might like it. Again, I don't know. I just don't think the food is good. Black hen is aight, is aight, right? Like, the chicken, the chicken has potential. But them black waffles and them black charcoal buns, ew, aesthetically, ugh, no. The mac and cheese is okay. It's not bad. It's always decent, right? But it's just like, it's inconsistent. And I feel like they're just running off of vibes. They're running off of vibes. The cocktails at all these restaurants, I have not been impressed with. I just feel like it's just too sugary, or just too much going on. It's just not, it's not hitting. I think the struggle I've had with all of these venues and all these restaurants, because let me be very clear, I have privately went, okay? I have privately got people to get me a to-go, to get me a box, to go. I have done my research, okay? Because one thing that I've also recognized with some of these restaurants, to keep it one hundred, that if I put my name on a reservation, then people will give me an experience that I know may not be the same experience of somebody else. And so I have gone to restaurants without, without it in my name. I've even not, I mean, sometimes my husband would do the reservation, but now he's been a face that's recognizable. So, we are very like, okay, somebody else make the reservation, we'll go. And even as the Lip Brothers, we have made, we got different names. And even as the Lit Brothers, we have made, we got different names. I gotta, I ain't gonna ever tell you, but I have a, a hidden name as my reservation when I go to certain restaurants, on purpose. Because I know that if I, and now it's even hard because I do get face recognized in some restaurants where even when I don't, they'll, they'll pop up and they'll be like, oh, it's Ernest. And so it gets a little, it, it's like, I try to, I try to figure out when to do it. Like, I will slide into a restaurant on a Thursday, a low-key early Thursday. Or I'll go on a Wednesday, or I'll go on a day that's not popping. And I don't post the restaurant or tag them unless I really like the food. Or I just kind of go low-key and then I'll pop up later and post something. But like, I try to do that with some of these restaurants. What I heard about Amina on Friday night at that opening is that the food quality is just not hitting. Inconsistencies with portion sizes. It's obvious that that salmon is not fresh, it is frozen. I don't know if they're prepackaged food, people need to ask these questions. I don't get the sense that a lot of stuff in there is fresh. A lot of stuff feels prepackaged. That seafood that they're selling for like salmons for like thirty bucks is a small little slither that you could have got from Aldi, um, one of them little packaged salmons that you could have got from Aldi. I don't know what the difference is, okay? Some of those dishes are small in portion. Some of them, I don't know if they're trying to pay for the rent, I don't know what's going on. But the portion size is not hitting, the food quality is just not there, the consistency is not there. And here's the thing, you're asking, restaurant dining in twenty twenty-five is a luxury, is a luxury. It is something that people, if people are going to go out and spend money, right? If we're talking about consumer protections. If people are going to go out and spend hard-earned money on things, they need to be able to feel comfortable and, and confident in what they're spending their money on. You cannot keep shaking people down, asking people to, to drop money for stuff just to support. Like, we, we gotta be, this is a, we're in, we're about to be in a recession potentially. We definitely have financial insecurity in our society. So every time you spend money and you go out to a restaurant, you're making a serious decision. And I think that in some ways, Amina's service and hospitality and their inconsistency takes that for granted. Because they, they just don't have it together. And I just feel like the reason why is because they're so expansive and they're doing so much that they haven't really put time and effort into like, every single time y'all see something, y'all just jump on it. And it's like, what's the rush? What's the rush? Like, come on, like, I don't know. But I just feel like there's just too much, too much going on over there. And now they're about to make Amina's Ocean. And I'm like, oh, a seafood restaurant in West Philly in my back of my, the back of, in my backyard? Interesting. Is this, all this seafood gonna be fresh? Like, is all of it not going to be prepackaged? Because just expanding all these restaurants, trying to dominate the city and have restaurants everywhere to lock in on properties, I'm like, yeah, that's a, that's a cool flex. But if you don't have, if you're not maintaining a level of quality and consistency across the board, it's kind of like, hmm, I don't know. You know, one thing about the Bynum Brothers is that they had, when they had their empire, you know, when they had all the restaurants, they had a bunch of restaurants. There was great memories to be shared and had at the various ones they owned. I just feel like with Amina, all these different restaurants they own, I just feel like everything is so rushed. And everybody that goes, I don't know too many people in my network that is going back to certain restaurants. Like, they go that one good time, they try it out, and they don't come back. Like, I don't know that many people that's like, I'm consistent. I don't know any people that I know that are consistently going to any of Amina's restaurants. Like, when I think about, and I'm not trying to compare her, I shouldn't even put her in the same conversation of like, I'm not even gonna name other places because I feel like to compare any of those people with anything that Amina got going on is just intellectually dishonest, right? I would say that, when I think about the Bynum Brothers, when they had their multiple restaurants, baby, Worm Daddy's was a thing. Like, Worm Daddy's stood on its own legs, okay? I used to go to Worm Daddy's for brunch on a regular basis. Like, those jazz brunches were phenomenal, right? I, oh my goodness, I loved, I, I loved, you know, the other restaurant they had, the one in the Northwest that was just so good, you know? Like, the Bynum Brothers had Philly restaurants in a handlock. You know what I'm saying? They had several restaurants, various restaurants, just relish. Like, Relish was just phenomenal. Relish was one of my favorite all-time soul food restaurants. Like, Relish in the Northwest was, it's, it's just its own vibe. And in South was the more experimental yet comfort food, right? And South is just consistently incredible. Like, all of those restaurants had their own vibes. I mean, Paris Bistro was cute as well, right? They all had their own personalities and you can appreciate them. I can't say the same for Amina's restaurants. I, I can't go, yo, Black Hen is this, Amina's is this, and I don't even know the other one. Um, Fia, and then there's another one, there's a second, there's another one. Wait, there's Amina, Black Hen, Fire, this other spot, Avira, Ivana, um, Second Daughter. And that's five restaurants, and then they got the ocean coming up. That's like six restaurants, guys, at play. I, I can't even differentiate anything memorable of all those spots. I mean, I know what they're trying to do aesthetic-wise, but the food is just not there. And so, yeah. If you, if you're, listen, if you're looking for a restaurant, there's no rush. If you want to go to Amina, if that's what you want to go to, you like the owners, whatever, good. You know, support, I guess, in Northern Liberties. But I always tell people, when you open a restaurant in another closed restaurant, it's an omen almost in some sorts. And Sin was not that great. Amina's, in my opinion, is not even as great. They may have changed their venue location, but the food is still the same. I thought maybe if they changed the location and venue, that the food quality and everything would change. No, it's the same place, just in different next doors. But I say all this to say that now that Avery is across the street, they still got Black Hen, but that's not really a big restaurant. That's more of a, that's a smaller restaurant size and different. Avery might be able to have more vibe. Because Avery, the Avery is phenomenal and a great spot. And honestly, I kind of like that Amina has moved to another location because now for people that's in Old City that really want to support a black-owned restaurant, the Avery is now that new opportunity in space. And also, you don't have to pick and choose. If you're in Old City and you want to go to a better option, the Avery is right there, baby. It's in that same area. And now you don't feel like you have to choose between either or. It, and it's an opportunity for you to explore and experiment into what they have going on there. Um, which I just always thought was the better restaurant on that block. But, you know, people just was, just unsure whether or not to give Avery a shot compared to Amina. Now that Amina's not there, I feel like the new vibe and new spot to go to now is the Avery because Avery is doing it. So, yeah, I'll, 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 I'll leave it there. That is, but I, I just feel like now I can, I feel like when Amina first opened, I didn't want to say anything because everybody was like, oh, well, it's just starting. And, you know, you don't want to dis-stand a third and blah, blah, blah. Well, it's been over a year. They got money. Like Tyler Perry, I don't, I will never feel bad giving Tyler Perry movies a bad review. He has money, he's a billionaire, he doesn't have to make another move for the rest of his life, he's gonna be fine. Like, I don't feel this obligation of, oh, look at you picking a little, small little business. Oh, no, baby, they got a restaurant empire. And at this point, my opinion alone is not going to play a role in stopping them to expand or grow. They're gonna have their, their baseline of customers. But for other folks who are on the fence, it's time to cross that fence and pick a side. I've picked my side, I'm, I don't see it, I just don't see it. I, I'm just not, I'm not seeing it. If you just want to be there to be there, great. But all I want to tell you is there are better options. There's just better options, there's better black-owned restaurants. Like, I'm not saying, don't go there and go to someone else. I'm saying, well, I'm saying like, I'm not comparing them to a white-owned restaurant. I'm saying that there are other black-owned restaurants in Philadelphia that are more worthy of your support and your patronage, that have better food, that's worthy of the critical acclaim, the money, the resources and the time. And therefore, if you feel like, well, if I can't support them, because a lot of times these restaurants will act like, if you don't support them, then you, then you're not supporting black-owned businesses. No, 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 let's be very clear, I'm not supporting that black-owned business, but I support others. It's not an either or, it's just not you, someone else in the same space, period. And I think I want to be clear about that because a lot of times people assume that, oh, he's just, you know, he doesn't like anything. No, 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 I do like what I like, but let's be there. So let me talk about what I loved this week. Honeysuckle is now on six fourteen Broad Street. This used to be by the owners, Omar Tate and his wife, Sybil St. Clair Tate. They are a lovely black couple. They owned Honeysuckle Provisions, which was in West Philly, which was a great place to, it was like an all-day cafe vibe, sandwiches, you know, pastries, all that. Well, they now have a full-fledged restaurant, a very spacious, gorgeous, beautiful restaurant that is at the Old Clementines on Broad. It's right there on North Broad, okay? This is right across the street from South. It is where the Old Clementines used to be on six fourteen Broad Street. Beautiful restaurant, and it gets my five stars, okay? Five out of five. This restaurant is, it, it was highly anticipated. We've been waiting for this opening for quite some time, but baby, was it worth the wait? They have a ninety-five dollar tasting menu, it's four courses, four courses. It is spectacular. It is what I've wanted, it's what I've wanted for Philly. It is what I've envisioned, is what I dreamed. It is what good labor, what good patience and persistence and taste and, and thoughtfulness looks like in a restaurant. It is immaculate. It is the best new restaurant of twenty twenty-five thus fucking far. If it does not get awards, it does not land on any of your best of lists, you're hating, you're hating. Fire, fire them, unsubscribe. It is, it is it, it is it, baby. I'm, I know I'm gonna get into the details, I just, I'm just going to have to gas this up because I was blown away. I was Tatiana, like, like this is the Tatiana of Philadelphia, ladies and gentlemen. This is going to be that next big thing. This is that restaurant? Get in now, make reservations now, get your ass on open ta, uh, open table and make a reservation and go. The price point and affordability is standard. It is a ninety-five dollar per person tasting menu. Um, it is one of the better priced tasting menus in this city for what kind of quality and level of excellence that they're providing. This is the perfect date night, this is the perfect dinner with friends, bring the crew, have a great dinner. This is celebratory, this is special, this is black, this is beautiful, this is unapologetically Afrocentric, but also in a way that's not pretentious, performative, or um nauseating, right? Like, everything makes sense, everything's approachable, every dish is approachable. Every ingredient, everything they've done with this menu makes fucking sense. If you're black and you understand black food, soul, culture, cuisine, you're going to appreciate the experimentation that they do here that is not like, oh my goodness, what is this? I can't relate, I don't know what's going on. You're going to get it and you're going to love it, you're gonna go, ah! The food has a very fun, flirty, artsy avant-garde look, but the taste is so comforting and so familiar and so at home. Everything was worth licking off the bowl. I cannot praise this restaurant enough. It is, it is serious. I, I am talking seriously to you about it because I just want you to understand that you're going to hear about Honeysuckle even if you don't live in Philadelphia. If you live in DC, if you live in New York, if you live in Boston, you're going to hear about this restaurant the way that you hear about Tatiana. You know how everybody hears about Tatiana, everybody know about Tatiana, everybody know about Khan in Portland. There are certain restaurants where you know about them even if you're not there. You know about Virtue in Chicago. This is the destination black-owned restaurant in Philadelphia now. And the fact that it's next door to South across the street, which is a landmark, that is intentional. Everything about this is intentional. Honeysuckle is the modern-day response to the future of where black cuisine can go. It understands its roots, it understands its purpose, it understands that it is loving the past but appreciating the future. It's diasporic dining at its finest. It has rummages of Caribbean influences, African influences, but not in a way that does not make sense. Not in a way that just feels like, what the fuck did I just eat? Everything has a rhyme and a reason, from the plating to the cocktails. I just tried what has cracked into the top five best all-time cocktails I've ever had in Philadelphia. They have a cocktail called, I Said What I Said. It is a gin-based spirit of, of a cocktail. It's fruity but potent, it's got Haitian vibes and spices. It's a Cosmo but not a Cosmo because it doesn't have vodka in that way. But it is one of those fruity Cosmo drinks. Like, if you're looking for something in that vein, but with strength and with flavor and memorableness, I'm still thinking about that drink right now. It was smooth but yet strong, but yet fruity. It was a punch, it was all of the things that I've wanted in a cocktail of that magnitude. It was great. Everything was great, everything was phenomenal. I have no notes, I have no notes. My next note is, I just hope that I can be able to go again very soon. It is a type of restaurant where I would go if I could. Like, it's the way that Rex's of the Royal makes me feel. Like, I love going to Rex's, like, I go to Rex's all the time. Honeysuckle is the type of restaurant that I'm not going to wait another year to go. I'm going to go again within the next month or so. I'm going to go, every time they have a menu update, I am going to go to try the new menu. That's how good this restaurant is. I don't want to not, not have anything on that menu. I want to eat everything they have, I want to try everything. Omar and Sybil did their big one, and Sybil did their big one. It, it's, it's immaculate. It's going to be everywhere. You're going to have a hard time getting a reservation in a month. It, it's, it's going to topple everything. And I, all these white food critics, I don't care what you think, I don't. Don't wait for them, don't wait for Craig LeBon, don't wait for any of these people to tell you it's good to go. I'm telling you, it's good. My thirty-three-year-old black food critic palate knows a good black soul food restaurant when I seen one. And this is not just the, this is not a, this is not even soul food like that. It is so beyond me, it's the technique for me. Y'all know I don't go to restaurants and I normally don't get chicken. I'm like, oh, chicken is just, you know, it's just very much like, if I can find a duck or something, I'm gonna always, because I'm always like, oh, I can cook chicken at home, no chicken's gonna beat what I've had somewhere else. Y'all, there, this, this chicken is roasted chicken dish. It's one of the best chicken dishes I've ever had in my entire life. I normally don't get chicken at restaurants, but the skin, the technique, the way that they, this is a properly cooked chicken. It is a type of chicken that is not overcooked, like the way that Amina's overcooked their salmon and their, their food. This chicken is cooked at the perfect temperature. But the juiciness, the marination of it, the crisp of the skin is, is a study within itself, like, how do you do it? And the sauce, beyond the moon. There are things that you just are gonna, every detail. They have these deviled eggs with crab meat, this good, fresh lump crab meat on top of the deviled egg. They added caviar to it because I just love caviar, and you could add caviar to it for extra. But the caviar on those deviled eggs, I'm just, I'm floored. Everything, everything is good there. They have stuff for vegans, pescetarians, those who are Muslim, those who observe various dietary restrictions, there's something for everyone there. You, you can go, read the menu, look at the website. It's, it's a love letter, it's a love letter to culture, it's a love letter to the diaspora. It's just all-around kick-ass badass. It is one of the best new restaurants, it is the best new restaurant of twenty twenty-five thus far that I've had. I've been waiting, Avery is good too, you know, Avery's one of my, one of my top picks as well. But this kicks ass. I, I just, it, it got, I don't know a world where it's not nominated for Best New Restaurant and Next Year's James Beard Awards. I don't see how it's not going to get nominated. It better, and if it doesn't, it's getting snubbed. I felt like, I mean, if they get a snub like that, that was a snub. I mean, I kind of feel that way, like, last year, the restaurant I fell in love with, um, Bastia, which is still phenomenal. That was like, restaurants like Provenance and Bastia were like my two favorite best restaurants last year. This year, the restaurant that does it for me, like, on this level, is Honeysuckle. Like, this is just something, like, the love, oh, I love it, I love it. That is excellence, that is the type of place you, you know, is worth the spence, worth the money, worth the time, worth all that. That's where you go. That's all I got, that's all I got on it, y'all, make that reservation, it's on open table. Honeysuckle Restaurant, baby. While you're, some of y'all are probably on your phones making reservations right now as I'm giving this review. I, I, I have, I, I'm just, I'm taken away by it. And if you saw my Instagram post on Sunday, and the review and all the pictures, and y'all felt that hype, baby, do not walk, run, run. Because I'm telling you, I already know what's going to happen for this place. It's like when I went to see Black Panther. When I saw Black Panther, and I never really went to movies to see a Marvel movie, I'm not into Marvel films. But when I saw the Black, the first Black Panther, I felt, I said, this must be how it felt like when my grandparents and my, my uncle and whoever went to see Star Wars. I was like, there, this is something magical, this is a- I was like, there, this is something magical. This is a phenomenon. This is, this is different. Like, this is different. This feeling I'm having, this excitement, I'm a part of something that's life-changing. And that was Ryan Coogler, right? And look at what Ryan Coogler did with Sinners. Like, that experience of Sinners, the way that people are talking about it, the way that people are unpacking it. Like, you know, when I went, when I saw Get Out, I remember when I was in theater and I saw Get Out, and I remember Barry, Barry and I, my husband, I was like, whoa. Whoa, 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 whoa. Like, there's experiences like that. Going to Honeysuckle was that experience for me. Going to that restaurant. It was like, you're, you know you're about to be on the edge of something magical. When I went to Tatiana, when it first opened. Me, me, me and Mr. Johnson went for Valentine's Day for the anniversary, and it was just like, yo, this is different. It's those experiences that you will remember for a lifetime. I remember where I was on April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. At seven o'clock. Out, at North Broad. I remember the day. I'm gonna remember this experience. I'm gonna remember all of it. It was beautiful. That's a restaurant. You see that, y'all? You see what I just did there, the range? You see that? We can have, we, we can have nuance, black people. We could be like, cuz some of y'all would be like, well, if you don't like this, well, what do you like? Well, that's what I like. That's what I love, actually. That's how you do it. That's how you do it. Moving along, to our hot topics. I didn't expect to, that, I, listen, this is our, this is our April wrap-up episode. So, you know, I'm bringing all the elements in. We even got to Shannon Sharp's ass, and this has been a blast. Are y'all, like, are we, are this? This, we, we, this about to be, this is one of those podcast, I feel like this is one of them podcast episodes, y'all. I, I'm giving y'all, I'm, I'm high energy. I'm on one. It's, it's, we gon', we gon' go to this episode. You get what you give. You get what you give, y'all, okay? So, move into hot topics. There is a lot of, there's a lot of constant, the, 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 the ongoing onslaught of the Trump administration. I can go on and on and on what I wanna say before I get into some of this tea. Because I've realized that there's so many crazy radical changes happening. You know, people are all shocked about some of the changes, the Smithsonian. You know, the Black History Museum, oh, in DC, and, you know, Trump wanna remove some black artifacts. You know, I could parse through all of that. But to be honest, racism is racism, and what do y'all expect? There's a lot of stuff that the Trump administration is just doing that. A lot of this stuff is to be expected. I'm not gonna keep reacting to every single thing he do. There's major things that I've realized, like even when my Trump coverage on this podcast, like, I can't just go through every single thing that Trump do. I just will not do it. I'm not giving that man all of that. Because to be honest, it, 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 what I've been noticing, and what you have been noticing each episode. Is that there's a threat of something, and then it happens and whatever. My new rule of thumb is, until some of these things actually go into effect. I will then talk about it, but just the mere threat or the posture is not enough for me. I'll let the, the, the daily, daily national reporters. Do that thing where they, you know, every little thing, like, I just, I can't do it. I, I won't do it. I just feel like it's use, it's, it's not useful for my time for you all as listeners. To basically tell you all every single categorical threat that Trump has made in a week. Because that could be his own episode and his own show within itself, right? Not doing that. What I will do is highlight, in my opinion. For my curation, which means that you'll have to do your own reporting and re- not reporting, but your own read and researching. At this point, it's inescapable. But I'm looking specifically at certain major milestones that I think will have a larger shakeup that will shape the administration as a whole. I'm picking those things. I'm being selective of those things. Things that have what I think are more lasting, more direct impact, right? Rather than trying to do this, Trump says he's gonna do this. What do you think about that? Well, what are you gonna fucking do? What, what, what can it fuck, we can do? Like, I just think, I'm not doing that anymore. So, go debate with. Um, Ezra Klein and all them other folks, when they do those little podcasts, and they wanna go hyper into every little fucking, I'm not fucking doing it. Because at some point, there's gotta be some level of practicality and balance. And I just find that everybody keeps reacting to Trump attacks or threats of attacks. That I'm just kinda like, at some point, when are we going to stop reacting and we're gonna start responding? Like, meaning, when is there going to be an actual action? Like, is there a congressional reaction to, or, or response or reflection? Like, I just don't wanna hear, Trump says he's gonna do this. Okay, I don't care. I'm not, you, you know what it is? And this is the real shade, cuz I gotta clock some people. A lot of these DC reporters and White House reporters, they are so powerless right now. They are basically grasping for straws, and I feel like to a certain extent, they're grasping for relevance. To be honest, we don't need all of this. We don't need every single update. Like, I just feel like they wanted busy work. There's a reason why they've been laxy days ago with Trump when he ran for president, because to a certain extent, they played a role in it where. They almost wanted to keep their jobs in relevance. I think Joe Biden, they would consider sleepy Joe Biden, where a lot of people did not. A lot of DC reporters and political reporters in general, with Biden, it was too normal for them. And I think to some people, thought it was too boring. And I appreciated the lack of knowing everything with the president. I loved when Biden was president, that. There was a level of, yeah, there was coverage, there was things happening, but there was a, a level of like, here's what's really important, right? But we're back on to the unnecessary excessive reporting, where every single fucking thing this man do, that Trump do. Has to take up, to squeeze the oxygen. And the crazy part is, is that it's not even Trump himself anymore. Like, he's starting to fade out. It's everything with his administration. Like, everybody in his administration is becoming the stars this time around. Like, whereas the first term, Trump was a star. Everything was about Trump. Now, everybody else is getting the spotlight. The Trump administration as a whole has its stars. And Trump is, is arguably slightly one of the more boring characters in his administration. Like, he was initially the star his first term. Second term, everybody else that's connected with him are in the spotlight more than him. And I wonder if he's at a point where, because he's an egomaniac, that he's like, you know what? I gotta get rid of some of these motherfuckers. Y'all need to remember back to Trump, Cameron Trump. Because, to be honest, for the first. What, quarter of this, this so far of his term, the star has been fucking Elon Musk. Now, Elon Musk is announcing that he's gotta focus. Them test the cells, baby. Oh, baby, the economy is economying right now. He gotta get his ass back to fucking work. Back to the office you go. Government efficiency. So, Doge, which is the Department of Governmental Efficiency, which is hilarious, has been anything but, he's saying, look, he, he's about to reduce his time. He can't give all this work to it. Elon is phasing the fuck up out of Doge. And he's making it clear more and more that he's about to phase out. Because he can't. And he's also clashing with the Trump administration on some appointments and some things as well. So, it looks like that relationship is just phasing on out. Because I told y'all, Trump is not going, he's a diva. Diva Trump. Donald Trump is a diva. Donald does not like to share the spotlight with anyone, okay? So, naturally, when it got to the point where, you know, um, you got this VP, like JD Vance. JD Vance was like, hold my beer. Okay, uh, Elon getting too much attention. Now, you notice that JD Vance is getting attention. Not for all the right reasons. I mean, the Pope has passed away, and he was one of the last major dignitaries to see the Pope before he passed away, but you know. Bad luck, omen. Um, but, you know, you know, he's been making news lately. Like, JD Vance is beginning to have his own be- come back in the news a little bit more. So, he's trying to do that. Outside of him, you got Pete Hedgehead, which we're gonna talk about in a minute, but you got all that going on. Trump is trying to get his feedback into it, right? Apparently, the Eagles is planning to see Trump, I think, next week. They asked Jalen Hurts, at the time, one hundred, um, red carpet or whatnot, was he going to be there? He gave one of the best no-response reactions I've ever seen at a press conference. Not in a press on a red carpet in a while. I mean, it was a turn, head turn. It was a lip signal, but it was not a word. And the reporter was just like, uh, okay, never mind. Like, that's what I'm talking about. You better do that. Apparently, he recently got married. He finally got married, so he's off the market. Oh. And he married a black woman, which we love to see. That's around his age, which we definitely love to see. That's also successful in her own right. I believe she's AK, he's a Q. So, you know, it's lovely, little divine, not loving there. Entrepreneur, she's her own woman, he's his own guy. They're just great for each other. We just love to see it. We love to see healthy relationships that are lovely. And shout to black love. We love to see it, right? But, you know, Trump is about to get, you know, he about to show his ass again. He gonna do his big one this week, but Trump is trying to fight for that spotlight. Now, I say all this to say that the big, the big T is that Pete Hedgehead. You keep hearing about this man, right? He's got a lot of personnel crises. He's got security lapses. That he's the Defense Secretary. This shit is going from bad to worse. It's even humiliating. Like, he's the Defense Secretary for the United States. Okay? And we've been talking about Pete Hedgehead, set, Hedgehead for a minute now. Uh, you know, the rape allegations, the sexual, all these, all these settlements, all this drama, right? There's a lot of problems going on. Once again, him and his goddamn signal. Um, you know, he was on Fox, you know, he was on Fox News, which is, which is former employer. He used to be on Fox News. He told everybody this week, you know, Joe Casper, which was his chief of staff at the Pentagon, he said he was gonna remain a valuable member of his team. He said that, you know, Casper is staying with us. He's not going anywhere, he told them. But then about forty-eight hours later, Casper resigned. And this is once again problems with the, the Department of Defense. So, now your chief, your chief of staff done left you. And now there's tea that just came out that Pete Hedgehead himself had an internet connection. Set up in his office that quote-unquote bypassed the Pentagon's security protocols. This is from the Associated Press, y'all. This is from the AP. They said, I'm gonna quote them directly, the existence, okay? The existence of an unsecure internet connection is the latest revelation about Hedgehead's use of an unclassified app. And raises the possibility that sensitive defense information could have been put at risk of potentially hackily, hacking. Um, or surveillance, okay? We're talking about hacking and surveillance. Like, y'all, all this conversation about the nation's security, all this about Hillary and emails, here we go again, right? Known as a quote dirty internet line by the IT industry. It connects directly to the public internet where the user's information and the website's access do not have. And the website's access do not have the same security filters or protocols that the Pentagon secured connections maintain. New York Times, they said that the Defense Secretary's personal phone number, the one used in a recent Signal chat. Was easily accessible on the internet and public apps as recently as March, potentially exposing national security secrets to foreign adversaries. These are the things that I feel like we need to pay attention to. These are things that we need to pay attention to. Something, something's going on. That's what I'm looking at. How long is he gonna last in his position? How long he gonna last in his role, y'all? How long? How long? Because at some point, the Trump administration wants to maintain power. They wanna say, we got it, we got it. He's gonna be fine. We're gonna work it out. We're not letting him go. The media, fake media, blah, blah, blah. You can only do so much fake media before more comes out. And I think that's what's been getting me lately, is just hearing people consistently talk about, oh, you know, wh- what's? What's, what's this, what's that? But sometimes, we don't spend enough time having that conversation. And so, I've been noticing a pattern lately. I've been noticing a pattern. I've been noticing a pattern of people. You, you know, Republicans being like, oh, the media just wants to make you, don't pay attention to this. This is not important. This, and the third, mm-mm. This is definitely one of those things where I'm like, mm-mm, pay close attention. Don't sleep on this. Don't. Don't at all. So, yeah. So, the Pope has passed away, um, Pope Francis. Um, it is, it is, it is interesting time in our history. Um, you know, a lot of people looked at Pope Francis as, you know, he was eighty-eight years old. He died on Easter Monday. From a stroke and irreversible heart failure. Um, he was eighty-eight years old. He lived a long life. Um, a lot of people see him as progressive. Um, which is very, you know, which is, which is, you know, he's, he's been an interesting man. He's had some, some takes that are not as in a traditional way. But while people are talking about him, you all know one of my favorite movies of last year was Conclave. I was a big Conclave fan. Conclave Hive Step Up. The timeliness of Conclave. And what we're about to experience right now is that we had a Pope that passed away, and we know that a conclave happens when the Pope passes away. And ladies and gentlemen, we're in the process right now of a conclave. So, there are several people in contention that are going for this title. You have, uh, John Mark Avine, who's Archbishop of Marcellan Franchi, sixty-six. Um, there is also Cardinal Peter, um, you know, Erdo, um, who's Hungarian. You have, um, and he is seventy-two years old. You also have Cardinal Mario Grech. Um, who is a Greek, which is, um, from Maltese. He's sixty-eight. You also have Cardinal Juan Jose Amela from Barcelona, who's Spanish, who is seventy-nine. Um, Francis, by the way, Pope Francis is, you know, he was the first Latin American Pope, uh, that we've had. So, you know, could history repeat itself? Um, you got Cardinal Pietro Perdito Parolin from, from Italy. Um, he's a Vatican diplomat. He's seventy. You also got, um, a Filipino. Um, his name is Cardinal Lu- Luis Antonio Gokongtago. He is sixty-seven. You also got Cardinal Joseph Tobin from Newark, New Jersey, who is seventy-two. Okay, Jersey. But the one that really does it for me, that excites me the most, is Cardinal Peter Quodwo Tapian Turkson, who is Ghanaian. And he's a Vatican official, and he is seventy-six. He studied seminaries in Ghana and New York. He was ordained in nineteen seventy-five. Pope John Paul II appointed him as Archbishop of Cape Coast in nineteen ninety-two, and eleven years later. Made him the first Cardinal in the history of West Afri- of the West African state. Now, if you've seen Conclave, you remember there was a black, um, individual that was seeking to be Pope at the time. Now, it was fictional. I would love a black Pope. It would be nice. Could this guy be it? Let's see. Could we have a black Pope? Let's see. We've had a Latin American Pope, you know, and Pope Francis. Is the Catholic Church ready for a black Pope? History would say, nah, but one can dream. Would it be interesting to see this? I'm not Catholic, so I don't necessarily have any skin in the game, but I am intrigued to see what happens here with this, with this conclave. And for people who do not know what a conclave is, it's called a papal conclave. A conclave is held by the College of Cardinals, which is made up of bishops and Vatican officials who were selected by the Pope. During this time, a group of leaders began like discussing the needs and changes facing the Catholic Church. So, it's very theoretical and philosophic. They are not just trying to find a Pope, but they're trying to figure out what's the future of the church. And this, and the death of a Pope puts that in perspective. So, now the Cardinals, they will gather in St. Peter's Basilica, and they basically invoke the guidance of the Holy Spirit, okay? About who should be the successor. So, it's very spiritual. And this, this definition is by the United States Conference of Catholic Bishops. That's how they see a conclave. Now, before the election begins, the Cardinals will enter the Sistine, the Sistine Chapel. They will take an oath of secrecy, seal the church's doors, meaning that only the electors are allowed inside. Now, this is what happened in conclave for those who wanna understand the process. But as the election itself, these Cardinals vote by secret ballot. So, if you, if you have not seen the movie Conclave, which I encourage you to see, it's a great film. I, I love this film, okay? If Enora was gonna win, they should have made this one Best Picture, but I digress. Um, basically. A prayer, they then do a prayer, they then drop a twice-folded ballot in a large chalice. And there are four rounds of voting are completed each day until one of the candidates receives two-thirds of the vote. A conclave is typically held within fifteen to twenty days after a papal vacancy. So, they do this fast, baby. This is within two to three weeks. It's basically, we're gonna find out who the new Pope will be. They will reach a decision by the end of May. So, we're gonna know very soon, y'all. But now, now, however, the length of a conclave, though. is depending on how long it takes for one candidate to receive two-thirds of the Colonel's votes. So, the longest one in history lasted nearly three years. Okay? Thirty-four months. And that was with the election of Pope Gregory X. And this was in twelve seventy-one, now this is according to the Vatican. Now, however, on the flip side, in twenty thirteen, we have Pope Francis, he was elected just one day after the conclave in twenty thirteen. Francis was just the top pick, baby. He was just the top pick. So, we might have several days, or one day, depending on what they decide to do. You know, it's gonna be interesting. It's gonna be interesting, there's already a little bit of drama happening already, and a lot of people are trying to figure out what's the tea about it. But Pope Francis apparently, well, had a letter that bans convicted, bans a convicted Cardinal from conclave. So he banned, this is very, very messy, but Pope Francis banned a guy from France who was convicted of a crime. This is, this is, this is tea. This is before his pass, so he, he basically, before he passed, was very big on saying, like, look, he doesn't want convicted individuals participating in the conclave, which is, which is hot, you know? This is a very diverse slate, but Pope Francis reportedly banned Bicu. Now, Bicu has claimed he has the right to attend the conclave despite his twenty-twenty resignation and rights and privileges of a Cardinal. There was a letter from the Vatican Secretary of State that reportedly unveiled a letter that was signed by Pope Francis that clarified that convicted Cardinal Angelo Bicu cannot attend the conclave. This is before he died. Francis typed, okay? It's very telling that said that, you know, basically Cardinal Pietro Perone showed the letter. See, see, y'all, y'all knows that name Pietro Perline. Okay, remember that guy, he's trying to go up for potentially being the next Pope. He showed a letter to Bicu Thursday night. See, it's given conclave, y'all. If y'all remember the movie Conclave, y'all remember this tea. So the Cardinal here, Pietro Perone, who's going up for the running, showed a letter to Bicu Thursday night. This is what the Italian newspaper Domani reported. Now, they said that Perline allegedly had two typed letters, signed F by Pope Francis, that basically said he could not participate in the conclave that will elect Francis's successor. And there is one letter from twenty twenty-three and another one from last month during the Pope's illness. So even when the Pope Francis was sick, he was like, "You can't, you can't participate." Now, there's a lot going on because as the senior Cardinal Bishop of Voting Age, Perline, you know, the Pietro presides over the Assembly of Cardinal Electors. So this papal letter in Perline's possession will lay to rest the question of who had the legal authority to exclude Bicu from a conclave. It's up. And he was, to be clear, he was once the second-ranking official. Now, a lot of people wanna know, what did he do? So, in December twenty twenty-three, he was convicted, this is Bicu, who was a Cardinal. He was convicted of financial crimes in a Vatican City courtroom and was given a sentence of five years and six months, and a fine of eight thousand euros, which is about eighty, eighty-seven hundred dollars in American money. And disqualification from holding public office. So among those other crimes, he was convicted of funneling tens of thousands of euros of church funds into his brother's personal bank account, something he defended as an ordinary practice in supporting charitable works. That's against the law, y'all. In a separate lawsuit, he was also accused of forcing from his position as the Vatican's First Auditor General, Lebrero Malone, of means of preventing internal audits of the Vatican finances. So, in other words, this guy is, is a problem. He's a whole problem, like, this is, this is not a good look for him. You know, they, there's a reason why they don't want him there. And he feels like he should, but they're like, nah, nah, ain't, ain't, ain't cracking, homie, this, this, this is a no-go for us. So, you know, it, it's, yeah, it, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot going on. And I think people need to take some time to reflect. And, yeah. We, we got some, we gotta, we gotta prioritize, and, 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 and I think they, he's a distraction. But there's already scandal and mess already happened at the conclave, just like in the movie. And we love, we love a little bit of Vatican drama, you know, to take us away from some of this national drama that we're dealing with, because, you know, it's, it's nice to have a cute little escape sometimes. Speaking of escaping, or not escaping, you know, disgraced former Congressman George Santos has been officially sentenced to seven years, or thirty-four months, or some change, to prison. He's got seven years in prison, you know, for fraud. And, you know, you play silly games, you, you win silly prizes. Yeah, this is, this is what happens. He wasn't just a liar, he was a criminal, and now he's going to prison. Seven years in prison for that fraud case. And his career was a joke about him being a prolific liar. Now, seven years. He was expelled from Congress, which is a rarity in American history. But also, now going to prison, prison for seven years. Yeah, this is, this is a lot. You know, we've been talking about George Santos from day one. We knew this day was going to come. Sometimes you wonder if it's gonna actually happen, sometimes you, you know, you're on the fence. But here we are. Twenty twenty-five. Less than three years, all of this, I mean, this man, I mean, you, you, this man just, I mean, he was gay, he was a Republican, he was a Trumper, he was all the things. And eighty-seven months, actually, he's going to prison for eighty-seven months. Yeah. Basically, he was found guilty of seven counts of wire fraud, three counts of money laundering, one count of theft of public funds, two counts of making materially false statements to the House of Representatives, and additional charges was among things, identity theft and charging of a supporter's credit card and then transferring the money to his personal bank account. This man was a total scammer. And now he is a convicted criminal. Just a lot to take in. Just a lot to take in. But this is what I tell people, like, politics, you know, some people want political power because they think it divorces them. But it's also funny about the intersections of politics, right? Because it's not that many, it's not too many elected officials in Congress that we know are criminals that actually get convicted and serve prison time. Not too many do. But it's interesting because in the Republican Party, the gay congressperson who had all these problems, who's young, all the things, he suffers, suffers one of the biggest, heftiest consequences for his behavior, and he's made the example, whereas there's plenty of other people, and to say, I'm not saying he doesn't deserve it, he definitely deserved it, right? But I always found it that interesting that all of the minorities within that party, right, that try to act like they're above approach, or try to stand on conservative values, they're the ones that, that take the biggest losses and hits compared to their more cis-head counterparts. Just an observation. Just an observation. So into local politics. You know, there is drama with Krasner, right, the debate with Krasner, the Krasner debate situation, so what is now known, because we're, we're in the final stretch, we're, we're less than a month away from the primary. The debate, there has been no televised debate between Krasner and Pat, Judge Pat Dugan. There was a story that came out, as you all know, in the Philadelphia Citizen. I shared it on my Instagram story. I was interviewed about the whole drama with the debates. And, yeah. Dugan stayed on his word, that he was not going to go in support of not just only principle, but solidarity with black press and media, different people had different takes on that within the media community. But he pretty much just said that he was not going to participate in that WHY debate because he wanted a televised debate. The WHY debate was not televised. They had a smaller room. It was Cherry Gregg and another reporter who was non-black that did the questions. Krasner participated in only, so it wasn't the debate, it was basically Q and A time with Krasner. I did not watch it on its first rollout, but I ended up catching it somewhere on Facebook Live or something of that nature, I think it was a Facebook Live. Yeah, it was just Krasner at a chair, talking, and, you know. The questions weren't horrible, but they weren't great, some of them were okay, some of them were thoughtful, some of them just missed the mark. They just seemed to just really, like, I don't know, it was just a very safe interview. Also, it just, it would have been great to be at the debate, but Dugan was like, I mean, but also, it was everything that everyone thought it was going to be. Where Krasner curated, in my opinion, the type of setting he always wanted. The type of audience that he wanted, the type of crowd. Like, when I looked at that crowd that was there, it wasn't that many people, it was very lowly attended. There was, it was a very small room, they kept saying it was open to the public, but they kept acting like it was a packed room, like a sold-out room, where they were trying to entertain that RSCPs were getting smaller, but I realized that they were trying to hype up this attendance, and I think that was a tactic to try to get Dugan to go, because I received notice and information in my reporting that Dugan was given a letter by the, by the partners involved, saying that, "Look, if you don't go, Kras is gonna only win", I think they tried to use that as a way to say that "we're not gonna shut down the debate without you, so if you don't go, we'll just be Krasner". And Krasner, I think Dugan was like, well, from what I've gathered from his team and how they've talked to the press, they were like, they don't see, they didn't see that setup as the whole, the way that this, the way that the debate, the structure, the organizing, everything about it, was backhanded. And it set a, a bad standard for what debate should be. A debate between candidates should never have a candidate manufacturing and demanding and, and, and really trying to manipulate. See, this is the problem, and I, and I'll keep hitting this, because this is the problem that we're seeing in journalism. Journalism outlets, me outlets, we're not in solidarity, like, we are competitors, we don't have to all, whatever. But you gotta have some self-respect. And I just feel like the partners involved in this were just so pressed to have a debate that they, they, they did not recognize that they were not respecting the journalistic integrity of what it means to actually produce a debate. And so to be quite honest, I will never, that's why we didn't do the debate. When both candidates did not agree to participate, we're not gonna have one just come instead. Because what's the fucking point? I'm not going to waste resources to have one person get questioned in a, in a platform, especially televised. Like, that's unacceptable. Second, I am not going to falter to the demands of a individual. So the fact that Krasner wanted these demands, maybe the demand would have been, he didn't want me to moderate, he never wanted to say that out loud, but my team was not going to tell me, "Ernest, sit down, don't participate", because to let any elected official cherry-pick who they want to moderate or be involved in debate compromises the journalistic integrity of what a media debate should be. So I don't know what WHY was doing this past week. I don't know what they were doing on that, that, I don't know what that was. Because I wouldn't even call it a journalism panel. I don't even know if we should even call it that, I, I guess it was a, because, because journalism panels do not compromise and negotiate with candidates all of the terms and the procedures, like, I've heard from sources connected to that, that Krasner had all these demands, he was very much cherry-picking and debate, and, and being a diva, like, you don't get to do that with journalists. And also, you shouldn't be afraid to answer questions by any journalist. But this is where we're at. So WHY, so pressed, so thirsty for relevance, so thirsty, thirsty for a chance to say they did something. They was willing to roll over backwards to have Krasner. But guess what, they thought that because Dugan was the, you know, the challenger, that Dugan would not say no. Dugan would definitely say yes, because that was the tactic. The tactic was always, and I'm not saying this is a tactic from, from WHY, but the tactic from Krasner is, "Dugan's gonna go wherever I wanna go." And so if I don't want to do a televised debate, that means that Dugan won't be able to do a debate. So if I choose to do the debate, Dugan's gonna do whatever I wanna do. That was the mindset thing Krasner had. And so when he helped manufacture this, this WHY debate with all these different players, like, his, like, I know the tea. And anybody who wants to tell me otherwise, come see me. Because I will name names, and I will name dates, and I will play all the fucking receipts. Because when I say manufactured, I'm telling you all that they did not have this organic idea. There was no plan for Committee of Seventy and WHY and the, the other legal, the bar. That was not the plan, they did not sit together and just say, "We're gonna have a panel". There were pieces added on pieces within a week of structuring. They didn't even have a date until a week before my debate got fucked over. They didn't have their shit together. They literally was operating on Krasner's schedule and planning to come to terms with what would work for scheduling, but also recognizing that this would be in competition with our debate. And so when you, again, when you, when you, when you, when you play silly games, you win silly prizes. So, their, their ego was bruised because no one watched that debate, no one really watched it, no one's talking about it, no one gave a fuck. It didn't mean, matter, because voters are not going to sit up and hear Krasner pontificate for over an hour. Nobody cared. And it was everything that everyone feared it was gonna be. And so guess what? Voters missed out on what would have been the best damn debate of this cycle. The one debate where you would have walked away with some real information, the one debate where you was gonna see a compare and contrast between two candidates, they robbed us of this. Krasner is the sole reason why. Because he doesn't want the rules to apply to him. Because he feels like he has a right to do what he wants, however he wants to do it. And as a result, who suffers in the end? This man calls himself the Democracy Defender. Democracy Advocate is what he says, DA should be a new word for Democracy Advocate. Well, where? Where? Where's the advocacy of democracy? Does it start and stop at when you define it and when the free, when the free press chooses to do its thing? I'm gonna leave it at that. I'm gonna leave it at that. City Council has a lot of drama right now because of Kensington. So this past week, City Council Live opened back up, I was on City Council Live at ninety-six point one FM, nine hundred AM, Progressive Black Talk Media, WRD Radio. You can catch me there every ten AM to one PM, unless there's a holiday or election, on WRD Radio City Council Live. A lot of you all do tune in and listen. And this week was very interesting, because I had a lot more airtime because there were still budget talks and scheduling, so I had extra time to talk and do interviews and things. But the real hot thing right now that's happening is involving Kensington. It's been reported by several outlets that there is going to be a major curtail where mobile addiction services, specifically in Kensington, in an effort to tighten regulations that provide people with addiction, everything from wounded care to hot meals. There is going to be a lot of changes. Councilmember Ketya Lozada, whose district includes Kensington, on Thursday finally introduced that amendment to a bill that initially prohibited mobile units from operating on residential blocks near schools. This was, this, this was heated a couple of months ago. This brought, was brought up, but it was very heated, and a lot of people felt some type of way about it. However, there's now amendments, okay, so she put on the bill, this was on hold last year, because a lot of people, I was there at City Council, a lot of people testified against this because they said, you know, providers said the restrictions could make it hard to reach people where they intend to serve them. So now she has a new amendment to that legislation that is, that now looks like it puts tighter restrictions on service providers. And it already got negative feedback. The amendment was approved by council in a twelve-by-three vote. So fifteen members of council was there present that voted, out of seventeen members. The people who supported it, who, who voted against it, the three out of twelve, was Kendra Brooks, Nicholas O'Rourke, and Rue Landau. Some of y'all be trying to figure out where did Jamie Gattie go? Was she in during the vote? Kendra Brooks, Nicholas O'Rourke, Rue Landau, they're the ones who voted against it. The other twelve voted for it. Two others were not, were Two others were not apps, were apps or not there, were not present. Council is scheduled to take the final vote this upcoming Thursday. So you're gonna, you know, it looks like it's gonna pass. But I want people to know this, these are some of the restrictions, y'all. The new version of this bill is going to stop groups from providing medical services from operating anywhere near the neighborhood except two sixty-five East Lehigh Avenue, which a lot, which is a lot that is maintained by the city. There's also the two block stretch of East Allegheny Avenue between Kensington Avenue and F Street between eleven PM and six AM. So they cannot do any services there. I mean, well, they can, except, they accept, so that's the only times they can. And any other location that the city designates in the future. So basically, there'll be no groups providing medical services for operations anywhere in the neighborhood except twenty-six five, twenty-six East Lee, I mean, Lehigh Avenue, that's it. That lot maintained by that city. The two block stretch of Allegheny Avenue between Kensington Avenue, F Streets, between eleven PM and six AM. And then any other location the city, the city designates in the future. So the bill also says that service providers don't offer medical services, that says that service providers that don't offer medical services. So if they offer free food and supplies, they may only operate in one place for forty-five minutes or less. That's crazy. That's a lot. But the, the service providers that violate this are going to get a one thousand dollar fine. Emergency medical providers and pediatric services are exempt. So if you're an emergency medical provider or pediatric service, you are exempt from this. However, they said that groups that are not eligible for renewal if they violate the code three or more times in the previous year. So Lizada's argument is that she's prioritizing residents. She says that the community in Kensington suffered a lot for a really long time. And she believes that there, that she, she believes that these policies is going to make a Kensington that has a healthy community. She says that people do not deserve to live in a neighborhood that is occupied. She says, we're going to continue to push this. She says, the government, we cannot continue to allow people to live on our sidewalks. A lot of people think this is inhumane. There are people in council that's voting against this, because they feel like, first of all, they feel like the policy came at them last minute. I heard from sources that members of City Council got, some members of City Council got this at, at ten twenty AM, right before the council session began for Thursday. That they got this at the last minute, this is kinda slipped in and she kinda dropped this on them. And a lot of members, some members of council and some of the progressives I spoke to said that they had just got that at the last minute. They didn't even get a chance to really read through anything and get enough information. So they said for this to just be rushed through like this, they were pissed. So it's gonna be very interesting times, but I don't know how I feel about the policy. I definitely think that is very restrictive. I think forty-five minutes? Like, you mean to tell me that people can't give out food and supplies for forty-five minutes or less? These are some tough times. These are some tough times. And then also, Sherrell Parker, the mayor, is defending the administration's plan to eliminate a popular business tax, because basically they're facing a legal challenge. The city's attorneys and the solicitors are saying that they don't believe that they will be able to prevail in the court if it defended the policy and they do not want to face significant financial consequences if they lose. So there is this major tax break, this business tax break, that the Parker administration is going to cut in this new budget. There, there's a legal challenge to it. Some people have argued, progressives argue, fighting in court, we might be able to win. But others are saying, nah, y'all gotta fold, hold it and fold it. This ain't what you want. So everybody's kinda on the fence about whether or not this is a good move or not. Where I stand on it, from what I've been hearing, interesting, interesting. I, I'll just say that, it, it is very telling. Because the business community has been a big supporter of the mayor. Some people should argue that she should fight it to the end, but they say they will face financial consequences, they try to push this, so that's where we're at with that. Now for this week's Ask Ernest. Shannon Sharp, we're here, we're ready to talk about it. I went viral this week, very, very viral on Facebook, shockingly enough, but sometimes when you hit, it hits. Shannon Sharp is facing multiple lawsuits. There was a major lawsuit that started as a civil suit. One of the attorneys is Tony Busby, which you all know. I'm not a fan of Tony Busby personally, but he is defending a young woman, a white young woman, who was, who is now, I believe, twenty-two. But claims, and Shannon Sharp is, I believe, at this time, he's now fifty-six now. But the young lady was, I believe, they, you know, she's now twenty-two. But she's suing Shannon Sharp, Sharp in civil suits for rape and abuse. For fifty million dollars is the lawsuit. Now, according to her, they dated, well, her allegations, they dated for a long time. They, they had a, they dated for a couple of years, I believe, maybe several years. But she says the relationship had gotten violent. She's an OnlyFans model. She said that they met, they dated for a couple of years. Mind you, that he is fifty-six, she is currently twenty-two currently. I, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm trying to brace myself, because this is a lot. There's a lot going on here. But this woman, according to these lawsuits, basically has claimed a lot. She, she's, she's making it very clear about the relationship. She said that, that there was assault that happened in October twenty-twenty-four and as recent as January twenty-twenty-five. And that, that's, that's speaking volumes. Cause that's recent, that's, that's very recent. That, that mean that's within this, within, within a six month time span. She's a Jane Doe in the lawsuit, she is a Jane Doe. And yeah, it's, 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 it's very telling. Shannon, of course, is calling it a money grab. You know, he doesn't, you know, he doesn't claim this, he says it's not true. That's the, the argument that he's made. He named the accuser. He said that the relationship started, you know, they both said the relationship started, he said the relationship started in twenty-twenty-three. He names the accuser. He's went out his way to name the accuser, which in many ways is like doxing, because putting her name out opens her up. She, she did not go public, but he names her publicly. He basically says his lawsuit filed by, by, he names a name. But we're gonna say Jane Doe, because we're not, we're not going to, you know, we respect accusers in, in this case. But he says the lawsuit filed by, filed by blah, 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 Jane Doe and orchestrated by her attorney, Tony Busby, is a blatant and cynical attempt to shake down Mr. Sharp for millions of dollars, is what his attorney said. He said it's filed with lies, distortions, and misrepresentations and will not succeed. His lawyer then went on to provide text messages of the exchange. Very graphic text messages. You know, he began his relationship with this young lady at nineteen years old, when at the time he would have been fifty-four years old. The young lady was nineteen, he was fifty-four. For those who want to understand the math, that is a thirty-five year age difference. He says that she's an OnlyFans model. She's on OnlyFans, she does sex work at nineteen years old. They had this relationship, he said, that was consensual and sexual, and they both have said that they dated. So they do both claim that they had a relationship. Basically, you know, she, he said the relationship began in twenty-twenty-three, when she was nineteen years old, after the two of them met at a local gym in twenty-twenty-three. They said that the, that the two were engaged in a consensual rocky relationship for two years. She is claiming there are things that went down that she did not consent to during that time period. She said that she began to distance herself with him after he was engaged in a sexual encounter on Instagram Live in September twenty-twenty-four. So you remember when I first did my episode and talked about that whole, that whole scandal, where he said he had a leaked Instagram Live? She said she began to distance herself from him, because remember he was saying a woman named Michelle? It was another woman, so I guess he got caught. I guess it was accidental, I don't know, but it was, he claims it was accidental, so it was Instagram Live video. Remember where there was this record, sexual exchanges, and there was a woman named Michelle, and he was naming her having sex? The woman claims she broke it off with him and distanced herself from him when that happened. Cause I guess she felt she was being cheated on, maybe, perhaps. I don't wanna put words in her mouth, but just to say that they had a rocky relationship, then all of a sudden this goes down. She said she began to distance herself from him. She said that, you know, he began to relentlessly pursue her and on two, on at least two occasions subjected, subjected her to forced sexual encounters. She also alleged that he would record their sexual encounters by her knowledge and share the footage with others. The court documents also indicate that the plaintiff is not the woman whom Sharp was caught on Instagram Live with, which makes sense. She also, so in response to these allegations, Sharp's team thought they was getting ahead of everything. His lawyers basically said that this is a money grab, that Tony Busby is the same guy who, you know, basically had to drop the, you know, drop the suit with, in the court case with Jay-Z. Also, he's the one who defends multiple accusers of P Diddy. But he also invoked Jay-Z, because Jay-Z was the one who had the case that got dropped that, that didn't even get to go to court because, or get to trial because of this. Mind you, let me be also clear, put this out there. All this is civil suits, lawsuits. So none of this is, is criminal, whereas Shannon Sharp, if he's found guilty in trial, he's not going to, he's not going to be going to prison or be sentenced for a criminal charge. This is all going to be handled with civil suit, which means that there's going to be a settlement or, or whatever financial regard. There will be no criminal penalties or sentencing whatsoever. So I just wanna put that there, cause I hate when people have said out loud like, oh, this is an innocent black man that they trying to lock up. There's no lockup involved yet, these are all civil cases, okay? So he decides to put this out there. It also comes out that there was a ten million dollar attempt to do a ten million dollar, I guess, settlement, like a situation where they was gonna just pay ten million, so this never will hit the ground. Because there's been speculation that Shannon Sharp have a one hundred million dollar deal that's in the con, in the midst, and this has been speculated for the past week. And so, interesting enough, here comes this lawsuit coming, and so he's kinda called it a cash grab, a money grab. And he decides to share what he considers is damaging evidence to prove that there was some dialogue between them. Well, the text messages that they showed depliqued a very racially fetishizing sexual relationship between this nineteen-year-old white woman and Shannon Sharp, who at the time was fifty-four. Mind you, I think she's twenty-two now, he's fifty-six. Let me, let me put this in context. In some of the sexual dialogue that they exchanged in, there was text messages where she says to him, she wants him to put a big black baby inside of her. She says she wants his baby gravy and other types of graphic racially charged sexual play. This is called, and for better lack of term, race play, which is a sexual fetishizing and exploitation of the body in exchange where race is drawn into in a very fetishized, hypersexual ways. So when you see people talk in porn of BBC or Big Black Cock, let's talk about it, because some of you all don't, don't act like we don't know what these terms are. We don't understand how these things are racially fetishized. Where people have a thing for what they call cute white twinks, right? Where they have a fetish for Asian women and this idea of them being more docile and whatever. All of this ebony porn and these black fetish porns and, and, and torture and ideas around BDSM and hyper aggressive blackmail tops compared to, you know, bottoms. And all of these different fetishes that are often, within the pornographic, hypersexualized narrative. We see it play out in pop culture. In my media studies, I studied the hypersexualization of women in advertising, but also the racial fetishism of black people in media. Like, I know this like a study, like this is, there are studies behind this, research behind this. I mean, you all know it, the stuff that you all say, the stuff that you see in advertisements, the stuff that you privately lurk on and watch for your own personal fetish. Listen, sexual fetishes are what they are. Racial fetishes is very telling. And the way in which these things are racialized, how they come up and how people treat people. There is, in my opinion, a very much research based on the pornographic racialized concepts of black and brown people and how that leads to their social degrading and their paternalistic endeavors in the workplace, how they're treated in certain spaces. As a black queer man, as a young black queer man, I have been hyper fetishized in industry spaces. When I was LGBTQ editor, I had a white, rich man at an event come up to me and basically, he was very, very rich. And basically, like gave me, like snuck a kiss on my cheek when he saw me and, and, and again, not in a consensual way, not somebody that I know, not somebody that I hugged, that I know, that I, that I, that I know or anything of that nature. None of this was consensual and basically calls me a cute black twink. And the reality of that is, is that this is a man who violated my space. This is a man who yielded this power, and I was young at the time. I was, I was young. I was that'd be twenty, twenty-five. This man is, was old, old. This man was past, older than fifty, older than fifty. Old enough to be my father. Definitely old, older man. And I was like twenty-five at that time, twenty-four years old, I think it was like around twenty-four. So this was like over, this is about roughly ten years ago. And this man was at an event, at this gala. He's definitely known in some circles. But, but, but really just, you know, was talking to me and just really was super, like really excited. But like, I was like, oh, he's just probably happy to see me, I just couldn't see that. But went up to me, after enough time, went up to me, gave me a hug, but then stole this kiss on my cheek and whispered in my ear, you know, you're a cute black twink. And I guess that was his way of flirting. And this man has a history, when I look at his track record, of always pursuing and being around very young, black and Latino men. And I think about Ed Buck, I've talked about Ed Buck on this podcast. Ed Buck was that old gay, really, really old gay, rich donor that was in California and, and young, black gay men were doing participating pay to play, where they was doing, you know, party, party and play, where they were going out, having these raves with him, participating in drugs and all kind of, you know, shit like that and getting high. And it was a couple of them, couple of them, multiple, that died from overdoses from drugs in his house. And this man had dead corpses and dead bodies and people dead. And black bodies were dying in there. Had it not been for activists and advocates like Jasmine Koenig and other people like myself who was covering this, this man was doing this and he was not going to jail. And then finally, I think a second or third young black man dies in his house and they finally convict him. But this was a man that was a liberal in West Hollywood, donated money and all this stuff, but behind the scenes was a meth head doing all these drugs. He's now in prison now, but how many young, black and brown men, he was flying out from Houston and other places, fetishizing them. And so it's not to say that I have an issue with interracial dating, let me be very, very clear about that. But I wanna be clear that people need to understand that interracial dating in certain situations, these are the fears that we see. These are the norms that people don't speak about, right? And so I'm looking at this exchange around race play. Is race play happening in interracial relationships? I hope not, because if they are, it perpetuates white supremacy. It perpetuates it. And so when I hear people say things like, oh, yeah, I like, you know, when I hear white men, and it is happening in the gay community, when I hear white men say, oh, I want a dark chocolate black man, you know, because they're stronger in bed, you're fetishizing. You're fetishizing black people, you're disgusting. When I hear people go, oh, I want a cute Asian twink that is docile and is gonna be submissive. I will never forget the role of colorism and anti-blackness and bigotry, right? That when I used to go to clubs, there was this narrative of some men that said they only wanted to date light skinned men that were. That they considered bottoms, right? That they liked their tops to be dark skin, they liked their bottoms to be light skin and. Somebody who, at the time I was at a club talking, I was dancing with this guy and he was, he was black. And he said to me, oh, you know, I'm too dark for that, that I'm too dark to be. That he couldn't see, he couldn't envision me being submissive to him because he's used to light skin boy, like he's more like, I was cute. For for a darker skinned guy, like, like I, he said before talking to me. He could never imagine someone in my, in my skin complexion being submissive sexually. He read me a certain way and was taken aback because of my skin tone. Yeah, y'all, we're gonna talk about it, yeah, we're gonna talk about it in a very nuanced way. This is disgusting, right? And 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 this is, this is the stuff I hear about black women, right? That there's darker skinned black men that will fetishize light women, light skinned women or white women and say, oh, they're more gentle, they're prettier, they're softer. And there's even light skinned women that I know that are like, oh, I like dark skinned men, I gotta have a dark skinned man because, you know. That's something about masculine strength to them. But this plays into the pornographic lens of white supremacy when we look at slavery, when we look at, this is ingrained. And I think we hear too many people talk like this and we don't check them. We don't say, hold on now, whoa, 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 whoa. What are you, what are you saying? Because it's one thing to dislike a person and say, you know what, I think they're attractive, that's a good looking person, I like them. But to start acting like it's a piece of meat, oh, I like dark meat over white meat, right? Oh, I like red wine over white wine, this is a fact, I do prefer red wine over white wine. But to discuss it within a coloristic trope, to discuss it within a racial lens. Where it comes to stereotypes about physicality, defining it by skin tone, right? Like I can say, like, I don't date often a lot of white men, I, I, I'm married to a black man, but when I was single, my experiences with white men. I never really dated any white men for many ways, but oftentimes. I just was not attracted to white men in a way that I felt like I wanted to pursue anything long term. Lot of times it came with just social, cultural barriers of communication. I'm not saying it's impossible, but that just wasn't my thing. I just had found that I attracted, I was attracted to and was attracted by mostly black men. Most white men that were attracted to me, I were not attracted to them. Or there were situations and dynamics where I felt like I was being fetishized. Or there was some type of interest in me that was inappropriate, right? So for me, it's not to say that I don't find white men attractive. I think there are some white men that aesthetically look good, I'm like, oh, that's a good looking man, nothing there. But when I think about romantic compatibility and romance and intimacy as far as that. I have not had the experience of finding a white man or pursuing or being pursued by or pursuing a white man. That was of that for me, it just was not the case and it wasn't the case for Asian men. Not often with Latino men either, and it wasn't to say, oh, they're not attractive, I mean, there's, there's attract, I think attractive people across. I think you could be living under a rock if you don't think that, you know, I don't know. I think there's beauty everywhere. But again, emotional romantic connection, I just could not find, I think situations that I found myself in, it just was not appealing for me. And that's not to say, but I'm not making a blanket statement that, oh, all white men are ugly, all white men are not mature, then I, I'm not saying that at all. I have black friends who are dating white men, I have white friends that are dating black people that I know, it's, it's, it's there. But it was never a fetish on either side, if it felt like a fetish, I was into it. Even within black men that I dated, like if I felt like I was being fetishized, I was not here for it. You know what I'm saying, like there was a guy who I dated was black. That was, you know, when I was in college, that was just kind of like su- super fetishized by my skin complexion, it was just like a thing. They were like, oh, you, you know, you're not too light, but you're not too dark, you just got the right amount of. I'm like, why are you describing me like I'm a fucking tell far back, like why are you describing me like I'm a dog or something like I'm a. Like an outfit that you're trying to wear, like it just felt like I was being tokenized and fetishized like a product. I just think when you describe people like that on a, on a sexual romantic level, like when you're talking a lot like that. That's hella problematic, because we don't, yeah, no, right? You can talk about like style and swag and personality, right? But but to put it on a color tone and to define a color tone based on a personality is so problematic. If you're serious about that, and there are people that literally die on these heels and make these types of judgments. And I'm, I'm turned off by that. And so for, for this woman, right? Because I'm, I'm looking at all the nuances here, for this woman who dated Shannon Sharp, right? We're just talking about the consensual nature. I can, I'm not getting into all the legalities of whether or not he did it or not. Because at the end of the day, the courts will decide, they will decide. I don't think it's looking good for Shannon Sharp on that front, but just on the nature of this relationship. On both sides, this was toxic, this was a racially charged racist relationship. This is a situation where I'm looking at Shannon Sharp, like you was okay with this woman saying these things to you. You was okay, you enjoyed this fetish, you enjoyed this type of, this type of buck like domination. You wanted to be the man dingo in that dynamic, you leaned onto every racial trope. And you thought that shit was sexual, you enjoyed being the thug, you enjoyed being the, 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 the big daddy. You know, breaking in little sweet little white girl, like this is what you wanted, you liked that phenomenon, that fetish. And sadly enough, a lot of black men are into that, not all black men, but there is quite a number that play into that. And so when I hear people at the barber shops and the spots I'm at talking like, oh, it's just a preference. I always tell people that that preference can have prejudice when it comes to these dynamics, there's always. And this case, this entire situation is every person's nightmare. Everything about what we think about black athletes who date interracial relationships. All of the weird language and verbatim of how they see themselves in community, but also how they see their blackness. How they will actually subscribe and will weaponize their own racial identity for sexual recognition, validation is disgusting. And it takes a level of anti-blackness within oneself, a lack of disconnect from one's roots, community and self of worth. That they will placate and play into those types of fantasies of white people. It's gross, it's disgusting, it's so demeaning and it's so embarrassing. And when Shannon Sharp revealed that, I said on that alone, I don't give a fuck what happens to you. I don't, you are a lost fucking cause. If you lose all of your fifty billion, you deserve it, you deserve it alone. If you don't, if you're found innocent, you are still guilty in the court of public opinion. And within a diaspora of common sense and self-respect. This is not a win for him at all. If he saves his fifty million, congratulate fucking latians, if he don't lose it, whatever. I will never, and I mean ever, never, ever, why ever. Support anything that Shannon Sharp is doing, I don't give a flying fuck. Because any man, any black man that will submit himself. To play in that type of ordeal, to self degrade themselves is not somebody that I want to promote. Platform, support or encourage, it is a no for me, it is a chop for me. And notice, I haven't even got on the age yet, baby, we, we just talking about what's consensual. Both of them have agreed that this was a consensual relationship before one accuser made the point about what's next. But on the consensual dynamic alone, fuck age right now, this shit is fucking disgusting. And is if this is the shit that you play into and what you subscribing to, you are not a good example of what it means to be a black man. You are a degenerate. And sometimes we do have a line and sometimes we do need the fucking judge, bring back shame, yes, you should be ashamed of yourself. You should be ashamed of yourself. Because for all of us as black people, as a community, as a collective, right? And Shannon has put himself in the culture, right? This is what we don't promote, this is what we don't do. And if this is what you want to do, you could do what you want to do, but you're not going to get space. Because the reality is, is that the signs were always there and I'm gonna get to where I get to with the age. Nineteen fifty four, what the fuck is a fifty four year old man doing with a nineteen year old girl? To find out that she is an OnlyFans. To find out that she's an OnlyFans. To find out that she's a sex worker. You as a fifty four year old man, having this type of relationship with a young. Nineteen year old sex worker is about power. It's about power, there is nothing about this relationship that gives equally yoked. It does not give, anytime you engage in a sex work type of relationship partially, right? Anytime you are engaging in this type of relationship where there's a power dynamic here. And the reason why I say this is because I'm not saying that I'm not going to accuse this man of rape. But I do sense that this man has a history, there are multiple lawsuits and accusations over the years. That accuse him of being abusive to women, not just women that are young or sex workers, but women that are around his age, that are more appropriate for him. That are around, right? But in this situation, what the fuck is a fifty four year old man doing with a nineteen year old girl? A thirty five year age difference. Like, y'all, I, 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 this girl could be old enough to be a grandchild. Like his kids' kids could have had her. This is unacceptable. This is, this is unacceptable. Shannon Sharp is at the age where this child could have been his own child's child. How is this not okay? When this man was thirty five years old, this child was being born. I need y'all to just understand the level of like, am I supposed to believe that, that this is normal? That this is healthy, that this is sustainable, that this makes sense? There's no way, there's no way that this makes sense. This is, there's no way that you could convince me that Shannon Sharp and this little relationship or whatever. Is all up in the air, it's all good, it's nothing to worry about, I'm sorry, I don't see it, I don't see it. And what's interesting is, is that when you're in a dynamic where you're dealing with someone that young. The relationship is rooted in a very, very strong power dynamic, there is clearly money involved. And then you go, oh, this is a cash grab, this was not a cash grab when she accused you. This was a cash grab the moment you all dated, because you literally said that you do not. You do not date your age, you date your wage. So when you say you date your wage, am I supposed to believe that you have enough money where you can afford to date whatever you want? Because that's the theory that that means, that men like Shannon Sharp, and it's not just Shannon Sharp, I mean, everybody's like, well, what about the weight man? Yes, Leonardo DiCaprio, yes, Al Pacino, yes, all of them. And we already talked about Dreya, so we don't got to talk about keeping that ass same energy. But let's talk about just men in general, when you get to a certain age. Where you think that you have enough money and power, where you can date someone extremely young. That's a power play, that's a dynamic where you absolutely realize. When you say out your own words, Shannon Sharp, that you don't date your age, you date your wage. Then you're basically suggesting that with the money that you have, you can buy a relationship. You can buy any type of woman that you want. And so for you, you felt like your money, your wage allows you and makes you entitled to dating a super under. Under, under, underage young lady, this woman is younger than, this woman was not legal to drink. So I wonder what them dates were like, if you were doing everything legal, right? How do you hang out with a nineteen year old girl, she's not young enough to drink liquor, so were you not giving her liquor? Were y'all not drinking cocktails and alcohol, so you were drinking cocktails while she sat there and had no liquor? You knew that she was a sex worker, so you already knew by occupation what kind of work that she was involved in. And you pursued her for those reasons, because you could afford her, right? Because you was not acting your age, you were acting your wage. So what this is telling me is you. You have a dynamic where you're a man and you're saying what the question is, right? This is all legal. For now, right, it's legal, but just because something's legal does not mean that is not just, doesn't mean that it's okay. You know, there's a lot of laws right now that is happening under the Trump administration that's not legal, but does that mean that it's ethical? Does that mean that it's right, I think it's unethical for a man his age to date a woman that young. I personally think that it is unethical. For a man to date someone that is younger than their children. I think it is unethical for a man to actively, or a woman, or any adult, to actively pursue. People, young people to date with money based on finances. Because you're using that as a tool. And so when he said that this is a cash grab by, you know, Busby, sir. You know how they say some of these men like it, sir, you want it to be used. This is not a gold digging situation, you wanted your gold to be taken, you basically put gold on the table to be taken. So I don't think anybody's a gold digger and I would, I would say, honey, is the cash app coming from the room, the cash grab was already starting. You played into a relationship dynamic where you was clearly spending money and, and, and giving this woman things. I don't believe for five seconds that you all had a relationship where you was not spoiling her and gifting her. I don't believe in the universe where a man that says he's acting his wage, not his age, but dating a nineteen year old girl, that there was no sexual exchange for money. Or however you want to call it, that there was not tricks and treats and all the things that come with it. This was a, what, concubine situation, one could argue? I mean, let's keep it one hundred, what the nature is, this is a man who says he's acting his wage. And so men who lean in with money and power as a means to define the nature of a relationship. Because this woman is not, you know, professionally is, is, you know, his companion. This woman is younger than his children, I, I'm trying to figure out what about this has him, what, what about this girl, right? So, so in the name of trying to defend the ability that he's not a rapist. He wants people to know that he's a misogynistic pig instead. Okay. But you know what's interesting is that that does not help him. Because what that shows connected to the attempt to try to do a ten million dollar settlement, because if you want to compare it to the Jay-Z. Jay-Z was not taking any types of settlements, Jay-Z did not give any of them a dime and wasn't going to. But the fact that we know that he tried to pay this off for ten million, hmm, okay. And then she decided, actually, I can shoot for more because I'm a victim and I deserve more, in her mindset allegedly. She aimed higher, well, of course she aimed higher. Because if she believes she's innocent and she has the evidence to prove that she's innocent, then, I, I mean, how else? Since then, more allegations have come, another woman who he was dating for an extended period of time have come out to say that. That for the past, you know, ten years that she's had issues with him. That she had complaints all the way back, that there was a situation where he's being accused of choking a woman, a former employee that he worked with, a coworker. There's a lot of things coming out about his behavior towards women, everybody can't be lying. Everybody can't be lying. And, and what I think that's very telling about this is that there's so many, like, 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 everybody likes to play into the pathology. And there's certain black men has been going above and beyond trying to, you know, make excuses for this man. What I tell people is, is that there's been so many excuses about, oh, you know how these young white women are. You know that they'll try to accuse an innocent black man. You know that these young girls out here be groupies and gold diggers. And so, if that, so, so what's funny to me is, if that is what you knew and you was gonna play on the table now, then my answer is, why ever put yourself in an environment and situation where that could happen? Like, do you really believe that, or do you believe that just now? Because if you always believe that, then why would you be the rich, former NFL black player, older, dark-skinned, rich man that will go out with a younger, old, white woman who's a sex worker? And, and claim that if you believe that that's what they do, then why would you do it with people that you believe that that's what they do? So I call bullshit on that, because if you knew this already, you thought this already, why would you keep doing it? And if you've already had several previous lawsuits or in, 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 issues with a certain type of person, then why would you keep putting yourselves in these environments, these circumstances? So the problem is not these women, the problem is you. This is a Shannon Sharp problem. Shannon Sharp has a fetish for white women, clearly. Shannon Sharp has a race play fetish. Shannon Sharp has a fetish for often younger women. Shannon Sharp has a fetish for, you know, not worrying about age, but worrying about wage. Shannon Sharp has a problem with women. That's what's clear. There is a problem here. And if you listen to his interviews, and how he was with Ocho Cinco and all these, this stuff, everybody wanna talk about, oh, Monique warned him. Child, stop it. Y'all gotta stop using black women as some type of, of psychic guide, or wherever to heal black men, and had, had he would have listened to this omen from this black woman, he would have been fine. Shannon Sharp has been a fuck-up. Men like him, it, nothing a black woman can do to save a black man like that. Y'all gotta stop this, putting this weight on, what if a black woman had to save? Stop it. It's not, it's, it's so patronizing, it's so, it's so patriot, people think it is so flattering. Like, it's so funny when, when black people use black women as chick, as chips to defend some things. You know what's funny is that when, 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 when Monique said this to him during one of those talks, right? Of, you know, hey, stay with, you gotta lead them young girls along, blah, blah, blah. People then was just like, oh, look at that fat black woman, you know, being pick me and telling them, or whatever like that. Or, or was she really looking out for him? I don't think that her, when I look at that clip and I really watched the whole thing in context, she was not looking out for him on a, on a mindset of trying to protect him from lawsuits, allegations. She was basically trying to make the case in defense of that leading women alone and comforting women like her. Which Shannon Sharp is never going to be interested in. That was not the banter of the, of that conversation. But of course, everyone loves to have that hindsight fifty-fifty, oh, so-and-so warned this, so-and-so warned that. Oh, Cat Williams warned about how white women could, y'all, those men, which I gotta recognize with these men, the Kanye Wests, the Diddy's, all these types of men, these men are drunk off of power. They love risky sexual situations. They love pushing the envelope. They love doing things that is not the norm because they feel like they can. There's nothing that you can do to stop men like that from doing what they do unless you lock them up, beat the fuck out of them, or cancel them. That is the only three options, either or. I don't support violence, so I try not to beat the fuck out of people. But sometimes, a rapist and abuser, that's what a fucking has to take. And sometimes, it may have to be jail time, right? Or sometimes, if we don't have those options, it has to be cancelization. So I'm choosing the latter. I'm choosing cancelization. I think that we just gotta divest. Whether or not he may or may not have raped this woman, everything else he done did in this situation that is factual, he's admitting to, is deplorable and disgusting, and we don't have to wait for a verdict to tell us where to go with Shannon Sharp. I've seen enough. He is done for me. I, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I don't care. There's threats of a sex tape that might be going out there. There's allegations of all types of other misconduct that is being alleged. I, I've seen enough. I'm not supporting him. I don't care what happens to him. Fuck that man. You know why? Because he spent his entire career being a messy boots for the past year. He, his whole career, or most of his recent career, all this money has been from stirring the pot, from bringing people around, from getting everyone's business, and look at you, you got all this business and all this mess, and look how you turned out. Fuck him. Like, there's, there's nothing you can tell me about Shannon Sharp in, 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 in twenty twenty-five. There's, there's nothing. I, I'm done there. So, just putting that out there. So, this weekend movies, Sinners is having another box office score. It scores forty-five million dollars in its second weekend. Okay? It is another big hit. It is a big hit. Okay? This is a rare film with a sophomore outing that nearly matches debut. It's especially impressive for a horror film, a genre that's known to fall sharply after its opening weekend. It had a ninety-million-dollar budget, and now it has surpassed. It is now got a one-hundred-and-sixty-five, a one-hundred, a one-hundred-and-sixty-one-million-dollar global gross. It's already made one-hundred-and-twenty-two million dollars in the, in United, in North America. Globally, it has one-hundred-and-sixty-one million against a ninety-million-dollar production budget. It is kicked ass, okay? It is killing it right now. It is crushing it. Sinners has done something unprecedented, okay? It scores one-hundred, I mean, it scores forty-five million in a massive second weekend. It only declined by six percent. Most films drop off at like, you know, thirty percent or whatever. Six percent drop. So it is holding up. It is literally coming out with a banger. The consistency in this film and the talk of this film is consistent. Meanwhile, The Counted Two, which was supposed to be a big deal, came in at third place. Star Wars Episode Three: The Revenge of the Sith beat The Counted Two, the re-release. The re-release of a box office film that came out twenty years ago is literally doing better than a brand-new film, and that was The Counted Two. The Counted Two came in at number three at twenty-four-point-five million dollars. Sinners, in its second week, got nearly double that. Y'all ain't fucking with Ryan Coogal, y'all. All that trash talk last week, all that smack talk about, oh, you know, you know, Sinners did good, but with a major asterisk, they can't even begin. This movie has been kicking ass at the box office, and I knew it was gonna be great. I told y'all. I told y'all. Maybe y'all should listen to me. Don't listen to the critics, okay? Just saying. Other news with movies is that, um, there is this new requirement, and a lot of y'all know I love, y'all know I love, um, you all know I love, uh, movie judging and Oscars and award shows. Something that you all may have not known, I can explain, is that the Oscars is now making people, um, there's a new requirement that is being said, um, it requires people, um, hmm. So, the best way to describe this is Oscars have new rules that say that you cannot, you must watch every film that you're judging in a category that's being nominated. So if you're judging in a category, you're expected to watch all of the films. Some of you all are like, no shit, Sherlock, why is this a rule? That has never been a rule, what's going on? Surprising, y'all, that was not the case. And that's why sometimes these winners were these winners, because a lot of times, judges, you know, they were supposed to, encouraged to, but it was not a mandate. Some of you are gonna go, well, how do we know it's a mandate now? So, I'll tell you a fun fact. So I, you know, I know I'm on the board of governors for the, the Academy of Television Arts and Sciences, the Emmys, the Mid, the Mid-Atlantic Emmys. Um, I sit on that board, uh, the, for the regional Emmys. And I'm the vice, I'm currently the vice president, the regional vice president. Um, I judge in Emmys categories, so I look at, there, there are certain things that get nominated, then I have to do judging on categories or whatnot. When I review content, right, and I do judges for Emmys, we have, this is the Emmys, this is not the Oscars. We have a portal where we have to, in one setting, watch the clips that were, uh, episode. Now, we don't watch the whole entire series, sometimes we watch an episode, or we watch, you know, whatever is submitted for judging. So, people will submit, now, if you're doing movies, you, you have to submit the film, right? But with TV shows, you, you don't have to submit the whole series, like, everybody can't watch the whole series. But they'll submit an episode, and you're expected to watch the episode, uh, you know, which could be an hour, thirty minutes, or whatever, and then you judge based off of that. But the portal gives you the submitted material. You click the submitted material, and the timer comes on, and you sit there, you watch it. You can pause, but you have to complete it, and if you don't complete it, then you can't submit, because you have to watch the, the show. If you don't watch it, then you can't submit a vote. So when I do judging, I have to set some time aside. I'm like, you know what? Okay, it's Saturday, uh, it's Saturday afternoon, I'm gonna sit down, I'm gonna watch, you know, uh, five episodes, if there's five categories, or whatever it is, how many entries are in the category um, that I wanna nominate, right? So I'll, I'll watch, I'll sit, I'll watch these episodes, and then I'll go, okay, I'll judge them, and I'll say, you know what? This is a really good show, I thought this was great. Whatever the category is, right, I judge. And there's like a scale, like you rate various things, technique, performance, timeliness, all these different things you, you judge. And then you get a number and a score, and you submit it, and then that's the score. That's how you judge the, at the Academy of Television Arts and Sciences. However, with the Oscars, it was not that. They would just give you the, the entries, and then you would just rank them, and then you pick what you like. There was no tracking to see if you actually watched it or not, you just had to submit your, your, your vote. Well, they've changed those rules now. And so now they're doing it the way the Emmys do it, where now they're gonna put the films in the portal, and you would have to watch the film, um, in the portal. So, on your laptop or whatever, and you have to watch it. And that will then measure and determine if you, you, you watched or whatever. Now, people could argue, oh, you know, what if that person is leaving it on their screen? Well, and you listen, it could be whatever. But the reality is, is that there has to be a more measured attempt, right? So you're gonna have it on, you need to watch it. There's a, there's a, there's a way that they can measure and track it, because there's a timer. Oh, technology is real hip nowadays, so there is a way to track it and measure it now, and so I wonder what this means, right? Well, certain movies, because a lot of times, what happens with award shows, and I've noticed this in other departments, even with the Grammys sometimes, is that people will just go through the juggernaut, like, if, 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 they'll do, they'll let other people do the judging for them. So if everybody says, we like, you know, Oppenheimer, then everybody's just gonna just say Oppenheimer gets Best Picture, even if they don't watch it. Or they might only watch the main movies, right? And they'll decide between those. But then what if you got a situation where you might turn around and say, you know what? Rather than just go after the movies that everyone sent me to watch for Oscar bait, maybe I should look at these other nominees, because I might like them. So for example, when I did the Best Picture judging, and I looked at the movies, right? The movie that I personally liked was Conclave. Now, I didn't get to judge for that particular category, because I'm not a member of the Academy of Motion Picture Arts and Sciences. But I did watch that, and I said to myself, well, hold on now, um, you know, why is everybody going up for Anora all of a sudden? And what I found out, talking to certain people and judges, where they were like, oh, I just went with Anora, because Anora, everybody was saying Anora was good, so, you know, I just went for that. And it's like, well, you just can't judge based off of one, you gotta watch all the movies, right? Like, whenever I judge for the Oscars, I mean, not just for Oscars, but when I judge for the Emmys, I watch all the pilot episodes or what episodes are submitted by the categories. So I can let you know what I'm feeling. Now, maybe some people argue, well, a series guy, whatever, but you gotta be real. Everybody can't watch, you know, nine hours or, or, or whatever for every show, that's just impossible. So, if you had a good TV show, like, I watch Abbott, right? I watch, what, Abbott Elementary without commercials, it's twenty minutes. It only took me one episode of watching Abbott, whatever they submit, to realize, this is a good-ass show. I really like this episode, I love the comedy, I got it. I watched Ted Lasso, one of the episodes, and I was like, it's okay. Wasn't my favorite. So, I saw enough of those shows to know how I felt. The same can be said for The Bear. I liked The Bear first and second seasons. Third season of The Bear, I was just like, I mean, I did watch the whole series, but if I watched one of those episodes, I felt like you can feel the level of energy is not the same compared to the previous. But sometimes, certain people, when they submit, will give their best, best episode, and that can woo the judges. And the same thing with acting performances. Some people will submit one episode for one person's performance versus another. So, for example, if I'm doing the Best Actress category, right? And let's say that Doctor E, you know, uh, Doctor, but Principal Eva Coleman on, um, Ava Coleman on, um, Abbott Elementary is going for Best Supporting Actress. The episode that she sends me will probably be one where she's very heavily involved, where she shows a range of emotions, and it will probably not be the same episode that, let's say, Shirley Ralph submits for her consideration. So, sometimes you will notice with a show, and if you pay attention, that the shows will put, will hyper, put one actor, and when I watch a series, I'm like, this is gonna, this should be the episode that Eva, that, that, that Janelle James, who's the actress that plays Principal Coleman, she should submit this episode for consideration for this Best Supporting Actress Emmy. Because not every judge is gonna watch every episode, but if you wanted to get the best performance or the one worth it, right? Like, if you watch any of these shows, you could watch one episode, where you're like, wow, so-and-so brought the fire on this episode. That might be the episode, what I call, that, that's gonna be the Emmy episode. That's gonna be the clip, that's gonna be the, the thing that they're gonna judge the performance off of, right? There's a whole method to madness. So you'll see TV shows will submit multiple episodes in different categories because they're trying to get considered for different things. Whereas films, you just watch one film. If you're gonna judge a film on sound, whatever, you gotta watch the whole movie. So you might have to sit down, but once you watch the whole movie, then you could determine, hmm, now I can judge for Best Actress. I could judge for Best Actor. I can, I have opinions about all the things, because I've seen the whole thing in totality. Um, so that's how it works, um, with these different categories, but it's about damn time, and I wonder if this is gonna change the way that people judge in the future. I hope so. I hope so. Hmm. So, with music. The numbers are in. Will Smith's album, his new album was a flop. That comes as a surprise to most, to, to barely anyone. I mean, you know, we knew that was coming. But there's been this new term I wanna unpack a little bit, it's called Chicken Alfredo Boomerang Music. It's been making its waves on Twitter and on other online spots. And I was trying to dig deep about what this really meant, this Chicken Alfredo Boomerang Music. What I have heard is, is that it's pretty much, you know, what Keri Hillson's new album is sounding like to people. People say that Keri Hillson's latest album, that's what it sounds like, that's what Ari Lennox sounds like. That's what some, some, some of, some of Summer Walker's music sounds like. So this Chicken Alfredo Boomerang Music is a reference to, Chicken Alfredo is like the basic date night music, like, very like, you know, like, if people go on a, like, when black couples go on, they say, like, oh, he took me out, or when they cook at home. Most of the times when black couples, or some couples, when it's like a basic date night, what they do is, it's always going to be somebody trying to make, like, you know, someone at home, not like when they go to restaurants. But when they go out, oh, no, so when they go, they make date, it's always a date night meal, it's always Chicken Alfredo. There's somebody who wants to make their version of Chicken Alfredo, that is like the most basic of basic black, black date night romantic dinners, it's Chicken Alfredo. Like, everybody feels like they can make it their own way, they add their shrimp, and it's either gonna be crab or lobster or something, or a steak, but like, that is like the most basic of the basics of like, black date night spots. And a lot of restaurants, you'll catch, at black-owned restaurants, if you catch them with some type of Rasta pasta or Chicken Alfredo, this is in the terrain of that cultural experience. It's not to say that other people don't, because let's be clear, Chicken Alfredo is Italian, right? But the thing about it is, is that that particular dish, and what it represents in like, black love dating culture, is so ingrained that it's a certain place. Like, you all, you know what the joke is? The basic black date night meal, and then let me be clear by me on meal, this is where you can either get at a restaurant, or if you go out, you're gonna get it at home, it's gonna be lamb chops, if the person likes, oh, they love lamb chops, and Chicken Alfredo. Or it's gonna be something with shrimp, or it's gonna be something with crab as a side. It's gonna be something like that, to, that's gonna be something that we think is expensive and fancy, but it's a very generic version of what that means. Boomerang comes from the R and B era of the nineties, the Boomerang soundtrack, which of course starred Halle Berry and, um, Eddie Murphy, and it was an incredible iconic film, and Boomerang, if And Boomerang, if you listen to the oh, the Boomerang R and B music, that was that, that was that Toni Braxton soundtrack. It was fire. That Boomerang soundtrack is one of the best soundtracks of all time. That music was very like R and B-esque, but very slick, sexual, but seductive, so do, you know, that kind of music. So you get the basic Alfredo date music combined with that Boomerang nineties vibe, and that's how you get Chicken Alfredo Boomerang Music, right? So this term has been on the internet recently, it's a little trend. And they were like, well, who are these Chicken Alfredo Boomerang artists? And I was thinking to myself, like, there's a couple of them. I think Summer Walker, not all of her music, but some of her music fits that. I think that um Keri Hillson's new album fits that energy. Um, Ari Lennox definitely is the face of that. Some people try to say SZA, but SZA's a little bit more artistic now, but I would say maybe some early SZA may have fit that a little bit. Some people say some of Coco Jones' music fits that. Fair. It's not to say a dish shot, it's just, you know, it kinda fits some of that, I would say. Some of Coco's earlier music kinda fits that category. I think Keisha Cole, she was probably one of the faces of that kind of music. Some, a lot of Keisha Cole's R and B, her 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 newest music. You know, it's it's a certain sound. But there's a type for that. And so I think Dr. Parks, she listens to some of these R and B artists that's out now. I don't listen to too many of them, but she listens to some of them and I feel like, I feel like they fit this category. So I just wanted to put that out there. Speaking of new music, I listened to Why Not More by Coco Jones. I love it. I love her new album. This is her debut album and it is good. It is a good R and B album. It should get some good R and B nominations in the Grammy category. Um, she has some really great songs on there. She is vocally talented. She is, oh, she's fun. This is a very fun, flirty, this is some good R and B music, but very fun upbeat. She's not trying to sound too old, but she's also not trying to be like this, like poppy girl. Like, I love that it's just a very clean R and B album. It reminds me, this might, some of y'all might go, okay, now, Ernest, but it's got like a brandy R and B, like ear, like like that Brandy's early two thousands type of vibe. Like, it has that early nineties where it's contemporary R and B. It's fun, it's flirty, but it's vocally strong, but it's a good range. Coco Jones is just a really great artist and I really love this album. She took her time with it and it's really, really good. I highly recommend it. It is not Boomerang Chicken Alfredo, it's not Chicken, Chicken Alfredo Boomerang Music, I promise. But like, it's just fun. She does some really fun things. Um, there's a song called Taste and I can't stop playing it. It's a reimagining and reworking of Britney Spears' Toxic. And if you all know, Coco Jones was a Disney Channel girl. So she knows the pop girlies and this is so millennial coded, this is so up my alley. I loved it. And like, yes, lyric by lyric, she does the chorus of Toxic, but she puts her own flavor and flair. It's not a cover, it's something different and it's good. I just love it. And of course, when I say Taste, she's referencing From the Taste of Your Lips, I'm on a rock. But the way she breaks it down and grooving to, oh, with that R and B melody, bop, oof. Good album, a very good album. There's another one called A E O M G. Woo. That's another good one. She has fun on this album. This girl let it cook and let it marinate, baby. This is a very good R and B album. I'm in love with it. But my album that I've been blasting all week, okay, I'm a little, listen, I told y'all about her last week. You know, she was on, listen, she was, they was, the NPR did a um, a a little tiny desk open table. Let me tell you, the Gypsy soundtrack, the twenty twenty four Broadway recording, the soundtrack is now available, okay? This is with Audre McDonald. This is her, this, they they did a Broadway recording. Baby, the way that this has been blasting over and over. Anybody who knows the Gypsy musical on Broadway, I talked about this a while back, they finally have a soundtrack. Audre McDonald's vocals on this soundtrack is crazy. It feels like I'm at the theater again. It's, it feels like I'm at the Majestic Theater again, watching this and getting my life taken out, me on the second row, watching her kill this show. She is great. I cannot stop listening to this Broadway podcast recording. She is going to get a Grammy, she is going to get a Grammy. Give her the Grammy again, give it to her for this soundtrack. When it, when, when, all you theater Broadway soundtracks, I don't care what y'all got going on. This is the one for me. I love it. I love it. Her vocals are phenomenal. Rose's Turn. I just wanna put that out there for all of my Broadway folks that listen to, that like show tunes and musicals, we need to run these streams up. I, I'm a fan, I'm a stan. I, 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 oh, oof, the recordings are phenomenal. Audre McDonald is killing it. She's killing it. Everyone's talking about it. Tony nominations are coming soon. Okay, we're gonna get these Tony nominations very soon. They're coming, y'all, and when they come, get ready because it's about to be a big deal. So there's been a lot of talk about TV shows. Look, y'all, I'm gonna keep it one hundred, I'm not watching all these TV shows. I can't, I'm not watching all of them. But what I will tell you is shows that got canceled recently that um that are, some that are getting canceled and some that got renewed. Because I want y'all to be on the same pace with me. Don't be hitting me up being like, oh, my goodness, we gotta save this show. I got the list. So Netflix is renewing Sweet Magnolias for a fifth season, which is really good. Heather Hedley is on this show and she's a great actress. Netflix is renewing it for a fifth season. So Haley, Haley, Heather Hedley, Tony Award winning Heather Hedley, you know, who was in Aida, the musical, yes? And she had that great album called In My Mind, oh, my god. Yeah. Prime Video is killing the Citadel spinoff show, um Honey, Honey Bunny and Diane. So they're killing, they they're cutting Citadel. That show Citadel, that they were trying to hype up on Prime Video, they're canceling that show. And um they're cutting, yeah, they're cutting the spinoffs of that show. So there was Citadel, but they're cutting the spinoffs, Honey Bunny and Diana. So Honey Bunny, Diana, those spinoffs from Citadel is getting cut. Um, Mr. Quest from Apple TV is gone now. HBO is doing The Last of Us, season three. They're gonna keep The Last of Us, they've already greenlit the the third one, okay? Um, so get ready for that. And if y'all are not ready, Grey's Anatomy by ABC is going to have a twenty second season. Yes, y'all. This season of Grey's Anatomy is older than the woman that Shannon Sharp was having a quote unquote consensual relationship with. Yeah, that one, yeah, it's older than that show. Than than that young lady, um, this show is, yes. There's also a lot of other renewals. They're renewing The Rookie, Will Trent, Shifting Gears, and Nine One One with um the incredible Angela Bassett. Um, so those are some of the big shows. Abbott Elementary is getting renewed. Um, Bridgerson um is coming back, is getting renewed. The Bear, season four, is being renewed, as you all know. Um, Bel Air though, season four is canceled, they're gonna finish season four, that's gonna be the final season. Below Deck has got a renewed, couple of shows that y'all like. The Boys is getting canceled, you know, they're gonna do one fifth and final season and then they're going to be done. Um, Citadel, the show Citadel got renewed, season four did, right? But the the spinoffs got cut after their first seasons, it it wasn't working. A lot of other shows, Doctor Who um got renewed by Disney Plus. In spite of people questioning whether or not Black Doctor Who was gonna work, it got renewed. Frasier, Frasier, the season two, other Frasier reboot, which I knew was questionable, that got booted. The Gilded Age got renewed for a third season, Audre McDonald's coming on that. How to Die Alone, a lot of y'all like that show, canceled. House of Dragon, canceled. After the fourth and final season, they're not renewing it. House of Dragon is going away. These shows, man. The Kardashians got renewed for a sixth season, they're still in renewal phase, even though I feel like they should be going very soon. Magnum P I, after its fifth season, is gonna go to NBC, is gonna move to NBC. And a lot of y'all watch that show. You know, it's 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 very telling. Uh, other shows that I think you all like are Outlander. A lot of y'all were hyped about Outlander. It's now in season eight, after its eighth season, it's going away. You all know that, you know, book, the book, so Power Book Four, Force, the one that everybody was hyped about. Book of, Book Three, Raising Cain and got renewed for a fifth season. But they're cutting the the Force episode. So there was Book Two, Book Three, Book Four. Well, Book Two wrapped up already, y'all know that was my favorite one, um, Power Book Two Ghost, that finished up and wrapped up. Raising Cain has gotten renewed for a fifth season. But um Book Four, season three of Power, has gotten canceled. They're gonna have a third and final season, so they're not renewing. Which is, I'm not too shocked about that. The Secret Lives of College Girls got canceled, um, which a lot of people liked as well, that's gone. Um, Stranger Things, season five, they're gonna have their fifth and final season, that's getting canceled. Yeah, a lot of, a lot of major shows. What We Do in the Shadows, which was a show on FX that I thought was really good, they're about to cancel after a sixth and final show. Which is kinda bittersweet because I really did, I really did like that show. You got canceled. Um, they've been around for a fifth, this is their fifth and final season of You, they're gonna be done. And then Young Sheldon, which is from the Big, you know, the 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 Big Bang Theory. Young Sheldon, which is pretty, is doing pretty good, they lasted seven seasons, they're gonna get canceled after their final seventh season. So there's a lot of changes happening in the TV world, y'all. Uh, stay woke. And then before I wrap up, I did get a chance to read Matriarch by Tina Knowles. I got an autographed copy that was sent to me, autographed by the Tina Knowles, okay? Like, hand autographed, right, with a with a marker. When I got worried about all that, don't worry about how I got, listen, I got an autographed copy that was sent to me, that was mailed to me. I did read it. I don't wanna do any spoilers because I do believe, I know a lot of people putting stuff out. Um, I'm gonna give an overall review. I'm gonna talk about a couple of little things, but I don't wanna tell too much. I actually think people should read the book because it's worth reading. This was a great book. Let me just start by saying this is a great autobiography. Um, I really liked this book a lot. I really loved her memoir, I really loved this story. I really loved this book. I felt that for somebody, for a family that's been notoriously known for being very reserved and very private, I felt like Tina just let it all pour, but in a very tasteful, thoughtful, organized way. I, this book is so fucking good that I wanna be able to put some context here. You do not need, this book is so good that I don't necessarily need a, if Beyonce chose not to do an autobiography, if she just said, you know, I'm not gonna write a memoir, I I'm very private, I don't wanna do a memoir on my life. I wouldn't need it to understand her. This book is pretty much the Knowles family, it is basically the Knowles family biography. It's the autobiography of the family. Like, so much of this woman's life, like, understanding their family, like, this book is, if you think this is the Beyonce book, it's not. Let me just, let me just get y'all situated. This book is not the Beyonce book, but it's the Beyonce story. It's, it's weird because it's through a family history where if you think that you're just reading this just to know about Beyonce, that's trash. Tina has lived a life that is worth its own book. I think a lot of people are trying to figure out what was the angle or the interest. She's a very fucking interesting person. Like, but, like, you know what's funny? Maybe that's the real juice. The real juice is that we should have, for some of these people, biographies from some of their parents, especially parents that were in this, right? Some people, you don't wanna book by their parent. Like, their parent really can't write that book because their parent wasn't involved in their life in a way. Like, the, like, 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 and I, in so many words, I think about, if Kris Kardashian wrote a book about her life and like the matrix of like how her family life through Bruce and everything and raising her kids, that in so many ways tells me so much about Kim and that family, that if they wanted to write their own books, they could, but like, I would, but some of it would be missing. It's almost like Beyonce, she did do a biography, this will supplement that experience. I think that's almost like with Becoming, like Michelle Obama's book, Becoming, gave us so much context about the White House and what was going on in ways I feel like Obama's book, which was good, his first volume, part one. We're waiting on part two when he gets ready for that. But it lays the foundation, Promised Land, like, it lays the foundation of giving me context behind it. Like, I don't think I would have fully appreciated Obama's book without Michelle's book. Because they're both major players, like, she's been so pivotal in his entire life, the understanding his, her journey to how she got there, the White House, the things. She fills the gaps of what he would never say or could not say, or feel like he can't say. And so reading Becoming, I appreciate Becoming more because it gave me the foundational understanding of what that life was like. So when I read his book, I have a full holistic viewpoint of what the thing experience was. You cannot, you will not appreciate the Beyonce if she ever does an autobiography or memoir. It will never work, it could not work without Tina's book first. Reading this, I'm ready. Because I also don't, if it doesn't happen, I don't need it, to be honest. I think I have a good understanding of how, because understanding how Tina's raised explains how she raised Beyonce, which lets us understand how Beyonce became the B. And she does not hide anything from that. How she raised Solange, how she raised both of those girls, how those girls are able to get along and love each other because of how invested she was in making sure they had a connection very early on. She saw certain sides. She talks about her marriage, she talks about her career, she talks about her family life, like, what marriage looked like in her family, which is why she divorced Richard Lawson within ten years of marriage. There's so many gems and secrets and things that explain so much of her. And I think that a lot of people that are doing these little Cliff Note versions of like picking and choosing what is the headline, I think they missed the sauce of the book. This is one of those books where you have to read it yourself, you have to go on this journey with her. There are times where I do find her interesting in ways, I'm like, ah, I don't know about that, Tina. But this is her life, who am I to judge her decisions? But you see the messiness of her, you see the, 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 the things that are not said through her. Things that are not said, but can be implied. I think that there was a point in in Tina's life, she says it, but I also sense that there was a point when I think when Tina was seeing her kids get married, her kids have kids, that she looked at her life and said, there's a part, there's a moment where Tina became Tina. And Tina was like, I deserve my own story and journey. I deserve this, my kids have been raised well, now I'm in a space where I gotta let go a little bit and live my life and I gotta let them live theirs. And there's a part of that that I love, and I think a lot of it came around the divorce with Matthew Knowles, Mr. Matthew Knowles, because for those who get that joke, Mr. Knowles, okay? Put some respect on Mr. Knowles' name. But I noticed that with her is that when that divorce happens, which happened at an interesting time because it's around the same time that Beyonce is getting married, you know, um, is that, is that an interesting inflection point? And it's, it's telling because you find out so much about Solange and the relationship between that Tina has with Solange and Beyonce. Beyonce, I think, teaches her, and she explains this in the book, teaches her how to step into her, 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 her glamour and her embracing her power and really accepting a compliments and not, and not feeling, you know, you know, timid or whatever. Like, Beyonce brings that in her. Solange brings out in her a level of clarity of, you can do what feels good for you, don't apologize, don't compromise, everything doesn't have to be cookie cutter, be frank and 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 be un, and be unapologetic. And so both of those two women, those two daughters, bring out a side of her. It brings out, Beyonce brings out the embrace of power and and stepping and walking into your confidence and and liking nice things and treating yourself and flourishing, right? And Solange brings her into the space of, it's okay to take your time. And she says Kelly brings her patience. She said Kelly, she views Kelly as a daughter. She's not bi, bi, biological, but she's but she specifically views Kelly as a daughter. Like they're so close. Like the way that, that they grow up, she also sees Kelly as a daughter that is, that may not be biological, but is her daughter. She views Kelly as that. She says Kelly brings out patience in her as well. So like all of these girls bring out these dynamics and you can see that she has her own unique relationships with that family. And the way that they've been able to balance all of their successes, that while it might feel to people that it's the Beyonce show, no, baby, Kelly, that Tina is the star. And I love the title Matriarch because you can't, matriarch is, is that you see this family tree. That it's not just Tina, it's the matrix of women before her and how they pass these things on to the women by, behind them. And why it's matriarch is that it's just that there's a strong line of black women in this family that have made certain artistic, emotional life. And it's about generational, legacy, crises, um, curses. I don't know if that's the right word, but just all of these different generational patterns that these women go through. And they're mirror that. And how they respond to those things. It tells you so much. You learn so much. You understand why Solange is who she is. You understand why Tina is and you understand why Beyonce is. And what I will say is that Tina is literally the combination of Solange and Beyonce combined. And with the spirit of also her bonus daughter Kelly. That all of these women's experiences are all intertwined with the experiences of their family. Like it's such a beautiful story. It's a story of family. It's a story of power. It's the pursuit of the American dream and what that looks like. It's the, it's a story of, of, of blackness in, 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 in a regional sense of the story of the South. It's all of the things. It is well-written. It's an incredible book. It's, 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 it's so good. It's not your messy celebrity, I'm spilling tea. It's so much bigger than that. It's a very great book. And even if they weren't famous, the, the stories and the legacy is just brilliant. Great book. I just have nothing but great reviews about it. So that is this week's episode. This upcoming week, I am making, I'm, I'm filming some stuff. I'm out here. I, I got some events I'm going to. There's a lot on the calendar. Good measure. I mean, CCP's commencement is next week, so I'm getting ready for graduation season. May is coming, so I'm, I'm, I'm getting giddy up for that. But you know, it's, 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 it's been a month. It's, April has been a month, as you all can tell. And as always, be well and be best.
Earnestly Speaking is recorded in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania and can be found on Apple Podcasts, Google Podcasts. To stay up to date with the latest on the show, follow me on Facebook, Twitter and Instagram, at Mr. Ernest Owens. Use the hashtag Earnestly Speaking to tell me what you thought about this episode and check out my website at earnestowens.com.